Good evening. The time is seven o'clock. This meeting is being recorded. Councilwoman Jones, could you do the application, please?
Certainly. I humbly invite your presence into this meeting. We gather to address challenges and make progress on our projects. Grant us your strength and wisdom. Work together in harmony and achieve success according to your will. Father, that our discussions and decisions with your divine insight and clarity. Help us to see beyond individual perspectives and to focus on collective goals that honor you. May your peace reign in our hearts and minds, fostering a spirit of unity and cooperation. Lord, empower us to overcome obstacles and find creative solutions that bring about positive outcomes. Strength in our resolve preserved in the face of difficulties. Trusting in your provision and guides every step of the way. Thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness and your presence in our midst. May this meeting be productive and fruitful, advancing our efforts towards greater achievements for your glory. Father, you said if we just trust in you with all of our heart and soul and mind, which would lead us and guide us, oh God, and give us the direction that we need. It is in Jesus's name that I pray, and we all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilor, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening. Councilwoman Freed. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Present.
Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson. And Council President Curtis.
He will be late. Thank you. There's a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Roll call to accept the agenda.
Was there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? I did want to add something to the agenda and the topics of discussion.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, stop sign cameras. Status. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call to accept the agenda. Both additions. Councilor.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Roll call to accept the agenda.
Okay. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
And Council Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Um. Okay, so, um. First on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. Okay, before February third, twenty twenty five, February eleventh, twenty twenty five, and February eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Objections, any objections to the acceptance of the minutes?
Point of order, Council President, um. We're just gonna, they can review them and then we'll accept the minutes at the regular session.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to legislation. Um. We have ordinance oh six, twenty twenty five, and this is sponsored by President Curtis. So I guess he can expound on it unless someone have any discussion on that. Okay, um, ordinance zero seven, twenty twenty five. An ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty five budget for the purpose of reallocation of expenses in the budget. Yes, uh, President Curtis also. So anyone, um, I guess when he come in, he can expound on it unless someone has something.
Uh, yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, um, so I guess my question is. There's an ordinance oh seven. Oh, zero seven, twenty twenty five, and now zero, zero, I mean, oh, zero nine, twenty twenty five, both are emergency ordinance, a reallocation of the budget. Is that reallocation? What is this?
This is, um, President Curtis, um, but on this one, the, um, ordinance zero seven two, um, twenty twenty five. It, um, does not say it's an emergency. It just says an ordinance to amend the fiscal year city budget for the purpose of reallocation, um, reallocating expenses in the budget. But it does not say that it's an emergency on the one that I have.
I don't, I don't have, um, I don't have oh seven.
I think that is my mistake, um, because I thought that oh nine was replacing oh seven. So that is my, that's my mistake, and I apologize to you all.
So there is no oh seven? Or is oh, or should oh nine really be oh seven?
From my understanding, and maybe Charles, you can, um, the city, Mr. City Manager, you can, um, expound on it. Are they both going for it, or is nine replacing seven?
So, good evening, uh, everyone, I'm sorry. Um, nine is a new, so we have the urgency ordinance, or what it should be read, um. Emergency ordinance is a re-appropriation for the FY twenty twenty, FY twenty five. Um, that's what that should be. And then we had, I don't know, I think we were on the second reading of the other budget ordinance. I'm, I'm looking on here now as well. Uh, but oh nine is a new one.
I'm, I'm really confused here, because I'm not sure. This oh nine looks like what we, uh, is the second reading of what we had last week. That's what it looks like. When I don't have oh seven, so if there's an old seven, I need to get a copy of it.
So oh nine is should be the newer ordinance. Oh, seven is the for the retirement.
Okay.
Oh nine has the attachment, uh, Exhibit A, which breaks down the ordinance to reappropriate funds for the general fund, special revenue fund, capital project fund, enterprise fund, slash go room. Uh, and then it has the tablet attached, or what the additional pages are after page three, I believe. Um, so starting from page four, uh, and it just provides the budgetary breakdown, uh, current month fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amended, uh, and the proposals. I believe, uh, Mr. Stewart is on as well to describe. I think this was an effort to make sure we provided you with budget information, uh, based upon a request from the last meeting with the ordinances to include that budget information. So the other twenty-four pages just break that down and show where the money is going to be moved and reallocated to.
Councilman Herring, the, um, the, the, the oh seven is the, um, is the, uh, to allocate sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, um, for the, uh, retirement for the employees. That's the one you said you do not have?
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's why I'm saying they need to clarify this.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, because it looks like you're amending a budget with this, when really you're just want to appropriate, you want to really this should be accepting a new retirement, uh, package. That's what this really should be doing. If they're going to accept a retirement package, just because you say you want to vote on it, you still haven't voted to accept a contract for it. So. All right. Yeah, this, this, yes, all right.
Thank you, Council, uh, Councilman Herring. Councilwoman Jones.
So you're saying that oh, I, I thought oh seven was the initial, uh, FY city twenty twenty five, uh, budget reallocation. And oh nine now comes into play because, uh, for, it was requested to have more information concerning the budget. Is that what you're saying? Because we have a resolution for the retirement.
Yeah, no, so, uh, initial oh seven was directly related to retirement, and I know that first reading was done at that, at our last meeting. We also needed to make a budget amendment, uh, which is why ordinance oh nine, uh, is presented uh, to account for, uh, some reappropriation. I do believe Mr. Stewart is on the line, uh, as well, uh, for a further detailed clarification, but that is the purpose behind oh nine.
Um, President, um, Ferguson, can I? Can I get in?
Yes, Mr. Stewart.
Okay, so, uh, just for clarification. Uh, oh seven was mainly for the retirement fund, to increase the retirement fund um, from the two point five to seven percent. So it's really about the additional four percent. Now, what we have done in that ordinance was to identify where the funds were coming from to fund those additional, um, amount of monies that were required for the rest of this year. Um. For oh nine, oh nine is mainly a review of all of our expenditures for and revenue for the year twenty twenty five and proposing amendments to adjust, um, for expenditures as it relate to the savings that we have gotten from the salaries that were applied to ARPA and the funds that are remaining, not only for ARPA, but from savings as it relate to other areas that trending showing a reduction in spending. Um, that's what that our oh nine is for, to show that there are different, there are um, savings that we want to take advantage of. And, um, there are some revenue that we are going to be adjusting as well. So oh nine is completely different from oh seven. Oh seven, retirement benefit. Oh nine is a review of our, um, financial position as at December and how we could make, um, different adjustments to the budget, budget or reallocations to the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Councilman Herring, you, you okay with that?
I actually know. It's still, it's still it's still confusing because again, you're, you're basically doing the same thing in both pieces. I mean, you're just saying in this piece of legislation, oh seven, I did find it. Um, that, um, you're moving this money around to pay sixty-eight thousand dollars for this new retirement program that um. Has the council even accepted that? Well, it hasn't come up yet. But it seems like you're doing the exact same thing in both of them. Because these numbers that you have in this, that you have on oh seven, you're making these same adjustments in oh nine, uh, correct, uh, Mr. Stewart? Because you're moving this money around.
Yes, and that's true. And what could have happened and what may have been, um, the better way to move forward? Okay, so we would have a resolution or, and, no, first of all, a resolution to accept the increase in the, um, retirement benefit and then an ordinance which reallocate all funds accordingly to fund the retirement and also within that, um, ordinance, you would have adjustment to take account of other expenditures, including the elevator, um, the council chambers, the nutrition center, and those other expenses that, um, we need to do some reallocations to, um, better utilize the funds that we have.
Well, um, Madam President, ma'am. You're on mute.
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, um, no, actually, the ordinance has to be done first because you got to have the funding there before you can pass the resolution to actually spend it. So, um, but, but, yes, I'm just saying, it just seemed like we're doing the same thing twice with oh seven and oh nine. Um, you allocate, you're reallocating the money in a budget, so you can have money for the, uh, retirement plan, and that can all be done in one fell swoop with this, with ordinance oh nine, since you're going to be making other changes anyway. Um, and then you wouldn't need ordinance oh seven really, because you're doing the exact same thing. I think there's a resolution that's out there already to, you know, do, you know, to, uh, increase, uh, to accept the retirement program. Yeah, so really, all you really need really is one, because what's in oh seven is also in oh nine.
And that is true. That is true. So ordinance oh nine would cover all allocations or reallocations to cover not only the retirement benefit, but the elevator, the, you know, as I said before, and also the American lesions, you know, those different, um, uh, reallocations that we are putting in play. So oh nine covers all of that. So we only need a resolution for the, um, the retirement. And I'm not sure if it's an ordinance or a resolution we need. Um, maybe you could clear that up a little, but I think, um, there should be something voted on. We had a reading last month for the, um, the retirement fund. But I think in that reading, it is also showing you where the funds would come from. And I think that's what was requested. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
You're, you're, yes, we, I know it was a resolution that we tabled because the ordinance hadn't been done first. So since the resolution is still out there, all you really need to do is, like you say, just do, because right now, if you do both these ordinances, you're going to basically be doing the same thing twice when it comes down to ordinance oh seven, because you already got it in ordinance oh nine. So that's the cleanest way to do it, is just to do it all in one fell swoop, and make all your changes in one, one reallocation of the budget. Um, thank you.
I, um, Councilwoman Jones.
My question's been answered. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. All right, thank you. No more discussion on that. Moving on to um, ordinance zero, zero eight, twenty twenty five, emergency ordinance to amend the procedures for residential parking permit guidelines, um, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, and, uh, I know we're going to have a discussion about that. I just put a piece of legislation together so that it can come to a work session, and we can follow the process, so we can get moving on this. So, um, I know, we really don't have to go into detail. I just made some, I realigned the, uh, legislation that needs to be amended, and I know we're going to talk about it, so we can actually move on, because I know we have it. That's under topics of discussion anyway.
Okay. Um. So we went over zero nine, okay, R thirty-nine twenty twenty five.
Madam President, I do have some questions, um, some comments on oh nine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, ordinance oh nine, twenty twenty five, emergency ordinance to reappropriate funds for fiscal year twenty five. Councilman.
Yes, I would like to have included in this reapportionment of the budget. I would like to have the, um, Church Street sidewalks, because I don't see it in the budget. I just, I'm not sure where, where are we pulling the money from? Um, for that, for the Church Street project, the Glenon, Glenon Parkway sidewalks and, um, Hay Street. Because there's nothing in the budget form right now, so I would like to have that put in the budget and outline under capital expenditures as a project that's, that's a capital project, since those roll forward for three years. I would like to have that money basically expensed, I mean, reflected in a, um, in the, uh, budget. And the capital improved.
Let's. Um. Ms. Ferguson, President Ferguson, can I go ahead?
Yes, Mr. Stewart.
Yes, um, so Councilman Herring, yes, those, um, projects are actually in the capital budget as it stands right now. Um, yes, yes.
Under.
There was, there was no need for, uh, um, an amendment for that, because it is actually in the nine hundred thousand that we have there, along with a forty thousand dollars for, um, ADA, um, was it, the ADA's, um, project, and, um, also, I think we have, um, street bumps and all of that together. Um, maybe the um, city manager could expound on that, but it's already in the, in the budget.
Yes, uh, Vice President Ferguson, uh, yes, from, uh, our discussions that sidewalk work, which I have confirmed with NZI, uh, along with the street work, uh, that's been proposed, which will include, uh, Church Street. Um, that particular funding, we do, will probably need to make sure we transfer or reappropriate that money for Church Street. Uh, but everything else is included, uh, as part of that. Or we were going to be working with that particular money to make that adjustment for the, uh, from the street work that we had planned for War Three previously that we've been waiting on, um, but then was delayed because of the weather, uh, or part of it, anyway, uh, delayed because of the weather.
Um, Madam President, ma'am.
Oh, yes, Councilman Herring.
So you're saying that nine hundred thousand dollars, it says, street paving in a budget, is what you're talking about?
Yes.
So that, part of the nine hundred thousand, along with, uh, and, and Dean, you can please elaborate further uh, with another part of the fund, which I believe is the, um, Dean, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I know we discussed it, but if you could comment on uh, the nine hundred thousand along with the other parts of money to complete the milling sidewalk work, street, uh, the sidewalk work on Glenon Parkway from Delwood to Eccles, uh, as well as making the adjustment for the patches, um, that needed to be done, uh, on Hay Street.
So what, what we have actually done is budgeted for all of the infrastructure, um, infrastructure work that is within the city. Um. So what we have here is infrastructure and road at two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, we have, um, street paving for nine hundred thousand. Um, we have the ADA project as well, that is going to work along with the infrastructure for the, um, the sidewalks and so on. Um, but as it relate to each project or each of the streets that we're gonna work on, I can tell you which one in particular, that one, um, I would lean on, um, the city manager to assist with that, but that's what we have, um, budgeted for last year. And that's what we are working with.
Okay, um, Madam President, ma'am.
Yes.
Um, I want it broken out. I want Church Street broken out as a separate item, and if it's in the nine hundred, then break it out of the nine hundred. The cost for that, break it out so I can see it, that you have a special line item for Church Street sidewalks. Also for Glenon, Glenon Parkway sidewalks. Now, the street pavement, Hay Street, I'm just saying, okay, that's, I'm going to follow the street pavement, I want that done. Um, that need to get done, so that I have to get done, but I want those two projects broken out, um, separately. So that they're there, and we can see them, and there's no, there's no misunderstanding when it comes down to spending the money.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing, and I'm, I'm not even understanding why I can't be, you know, um, listed, uh, which projects is where and, and what is covered, so I am in agreement, uh, with the Church Street and the Glenon Parkway, actually Hayes too, but, um, thank you for that. Um.
Um, Madam President, ma'am, continue.
Oh, yes.
Um, yeah, um, so also, I have coming up, um, an ordinance for, um, and we can, we can decide, if we're going to add it in, if, if it's supported for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, um, Better Workers Relief Program, as well as, um, extending a rebate program again, since half, fifty percent of the citizens didn't take advantage of it because of the way it was rolled out, which will be another, uh, about four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. And, um, so I would like to have those also put in a budget too. And there's one other thing, I think. Something else. So, yeah, so, but we can talk about that when we get to the legislation.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Okay, R thirty-nine, twenty twenty five, resolution to extend the property tax rebate program to Glenheart and homeowners. Councilman Herring and Councilman Hairston. Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, Madam President.
Yes.
That, that, I want to extend that program again, because again, the way the program was rolled out, it was rolled out with an, uh, very misleading letter that went out to the citizens in the community, basically saying, you know, you swear oath to Capitol Heights and, um, you know, Capitol Heights all through this letter. And people I talked to were confused. They said they thought it was a scam. You know, they said this is a scam, you know, why would Glenon be having something in there with Capitol Heights? That's why you only got a fifty percent, um, response. And I think it should be, we should give the people one more opportunity for those who did not get it to be able to apply for it, because a lot of my talk to and a lot of seniors were talking like, I, I thought it was a scam. I didn't want to, you know, give nobody my information or anything else, because they were talking about Capitol Heights. So I just want to extend that program again. You know, at least until June in order to, um, give people the opportunity to try to, um, take advantage of this five hundred dollar rebate, those who did not get it.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on this legislation? Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you. That, um. This, uh, rebate program was, uh, presented during the ARPA funds, when we had, well, no, this, we reused the reserves for this. And, um, And, um, I don't think that it needs to be re- uh, extended because the misinformation given about the program was corrected through another, uh, letter to the citizens. Uh, citizens called to City Hall to find out about it. Uh, most of the, uh, programs that we extended to the citizens, I, I would say mostly, um, half of them, only fifty percent of the citizens, um, use the programs. So I think the number of persons that use the programs were the persons that were going to use the programs. Uh, how do we know at this juncture who has already received these, uh, these funds and who has not? Unless the, um, treasurer kept a spreadsheet for, um, the persons that, um, participated in the rebate program. But like I said, the, um, there was information, there was, yes, misinformation was sent out, but that information was corrected through, uh, another, uh, mailing. It was corrected through the website. It was corrected through the, um, the, uh, board outside. So, um, I'm not in favor of this, uh, extending this program again, the, the, um, uh, that's all I'll say right now about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Madam President, ma'am.
Councilman Hare.
Yeah, the only letter went out, that went out was the first letter. There was no correction on that. Um, there was no, nothing else went out. They put it up on a website with, when they corrected some of the information on the website, that's about it. There was nothing else that went out. And I think people should have opportunity to take advantage of a five hundred dollar rebate. They would have taken advantage of it if the information would have went out correctly. And again, no second letter went out correcting anything. And, uh, treasurer has maintained a spreadsheet of everybody that has, uh, taken, taken, that has taken advantage of the, uh, rebate because you had to, because you didn't want people to double dip. So to sit there and just say you don't think somebody should do it because you think everybody got, was well informed. That, I mean, I could say this, I could have said the same thing about the tutoring program. Y'all extended that well past its due date. You know, but, you know, to try to get everybody to take advantage of it. So I don't understand what the difference is with this. Thank you.
Councilman Harris, Harrison.
Yeah, I just wanted to say beside the point, like, um, I don't think that it's gonna hurt to get citizens a few more months just to see if they could capitalize off of the city doing something that can benefit them. That's just all I gotta say.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Resolution forty.
Madam President.
Councilman Hare.
Oh, no, go ahead, just go ahead, let's go ahead, let's move.
You sure?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, resolution forty twenty twenty five, a resolution to establish the federal workers relief program. Councilman Herring and Councilman Harrison. Um, either one of you.
Yeah. Yes, I had a conversation with, um, some federal employees that live in Glen Arden and, um, one person in particular and kinda said he worked for an agency as a contractor for eighteen years. He got hired in May. And because he did not meet his one-year probation, which was coming up at this May, they terminated. In the letter, the, letter that they gave him terminating him basically said that he was terminated because of his work performance, which basically denies you, could possibly deny you unemployment. So I just think we need to do a grant program to help these, help these employees, uh, these federal employees out, um, giving them an opportunity, I mean, trying to give them some breathing room because you never know what's gonna happen with this economy and with this um, market of they're gonna get another job. I know five thousand, I'm looking at throwing a five thousand dollar grant. But you gotta meet certain qualifications. It's for Glenon residents, you know, you gotta, um, you had to, would have had to been terminated after, uh, January twentieth. Um, you would have to have, um, show your, um, proof of termination, your le- the letter of termination with the, um, from the federal government or whatever agency you're with. So I'm just thinking that this is a way to help out, um, some of our people in the community. Again, um, we budgeted one point five million dollars for the, um, rebate program and that own, that program would only, was only gonna take, even, even if we extended, it's only gonna take maybe about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. So that still leaves us with six hundred, I mean, um, yeah, six hundred thousand dollars. And I think two hundred fifty thousand dollars going toward this program is, is, um, nothing compared since we spent three hundred thousand dollars on tutoring. And I think this is a worthwhile program that we really need to push out there to just to give our citizens that are, that's caught up in this bureaucracy and in this, this craziness of this administration. Um, you know, a hand. Hmm, thank you.
Um. This says, um, federal workers. Are you? And I think I heard you, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you spoke to someone that was a contractor? Federal contractor?
Yeah, he was a contractor. Then he got hired by the federal government. He got hired with NIH.
So he was, so he was, um, hired under, um, OPM.
Yes, yes, he was having the OP. And then it submitted, then, you know, of course he had his resignation letter from OPM that he's been terminated because, uh, he didn't reach his, um, probationary, his one-year. Yeah.
Okay, uh, my concern is, I mean, having been a federal employee for uh, forty seven plus five years, um, and I, and I know this is, what's happening now is definitely different than, um, reduction in force or RIF, which I had, you know, um, saw five, um, myself and fortunately I, I was not affected, but um, the federal, um, you say federal workers, then, then, uh, most of the, um, workers, a lot of the workers have been, um, jobs. I don't know what year it was, what president did it, but, um, when they started, um, using, um, replacing federal, um, employees with, with contractors. So hypothetically, say a whole agency is shut down or people just, you know, they asked to leave. You have federal contractors that are um, affected by that. But they're not federal employees. Then there's some, um, some agencies that maybe just wiped completely out. And one of the things I know about the, um, federal government is that they try to, um, uh, utilize or give services to, for instance, um, women owned businesses or veteran, um, uh, businesses are owned by veterans. And that's something that, you know, even when we were taking bids and stuff, we would make sure we included that, um, those, um, type of things. So if a whole agency is closed down and you may have, I mean, down to maybe, um, a women's business that they have a cleaning, um, uh, business, so they clean the federal building, so that whole building, everything's closed, so, but they're not federal employees. I, I mean, I, you know, but they're affected by this because the federal government has actually just ripped up a whole agency. So I, I, you know, I'm not saying the fairness in just federal workers, um, and I think is a lot more involved, um, because it, it'll trickle down, like the federal, and I, I talked to, um, a council, a county council, uh, member that, and asked them, um, were they, try, um, was the county doing anything? Um, grants or any type of, um, help? Was the state doing anything? So Wes, um, Wes Moore, he's, um, opening up jobs. Um, I was told that there's a deficit in the state, a deficit in, um, county and basically like the tax came back, basically there's no, well, I mean, what was there was we're broke. So um, you did, one of my questions was how much money were you gonna, um, were you talking about? So you did say two hundred fifty thousand, but I just, I think it's, it's a lot more involved. Um, so in your definition, are you saying, when you said federal workers, are you literally saying those that are hired by OPM or anybody that was working in the government, whether they're, they're contractors, the contractors are, you know, and even if they go back to their company, because of the mass firing, you know, it's still gonna be some kind of conflict or everybody, they just can't just put people on jobs, um, automatically. And I mean, um, you know, before, you know, fifteen, twenty years, I, I was a, a, um, contact, when I retired, I was a contracting, uh, contracting officer representative and a, um, and so I, you know, I know that, you know, they can go back to their company, but, um, how is that, how, how are you defining a federal worker?
I'm defining any federal that was hired under OPM that was terminated based on, um, President Trump's executive order or DOGE or, uh, let's say President Elon Musk and his, uh, uh, termination of, of what he considered are federal employees who have not reached their probationary period.
Okay, but what, what, okay, so then what if we have people, right, you know, that's in Glen Arden that was a contractor and they was affected the same way except for they wasn't a federal employee. But because that particular agency was zapped out or they just fired everybody in that organization or agency, everybody had to leave. So how we distinguish a Glen Arden federal employee from a Glen Arden contractor working for a federal agency?
Because a, 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 a federal employee would have gotten a letter from OPM terminating their employment with the federal government. A contractor is gonna go through whatever, whichever contract, whichever company they're working for, it's a contractor. That's why I'm not, I'm focusing on contractors. Contractors are not technically, they're working for the government, but they're not technically a federal employee of the United States government. They can lose that contract at any time. It might, and, and Trump may not even do it. Sometimes you have, everywhere they wanna adjust, uh, the, certain agencies and certain departments, and they wanna get rid of a contractor. Sometimes the contractor that they're using are not, is not what they want. They may change out the contractor. So that's a risk you take, I feel, when you work as a contract worker. You know, you never know when you may lose a contract. You never know when a contract may no longer be in effect. You never know when he may wanna scale down contracting and, and pull in more permanent employees. So right now I'm just focusing on them, the employees that are directly affected by Donald Trump's order, executive order, uh, in his DOGE, uh, Department of Termination, that's basically what they are, who are affecting these workers who basically, you know, signed on to the federal government in good faith, thinking they had a job if they make their, make their one year probation and then being unfairly terminated and not only being unfairly terminated, um, given, be given a letter saying that you were terminated due to your performance. And if you're a contract worker, they can just say we lost the contract. You know, and that's it. But having that put into your record, I mean, having, having me be given, given a letter that you have submitted to unemployment that says you were terminated du- due to your work performance, when in, in actuality, it says they wanted to terminate you, so today I'm gonna have to pay unemployment. You know, I don't think it's fair. So right now I'm looking at the federal workers, those who were hired under OPM, um, that's a actual federal worker, the contractors, I, I'm, you know, and I feel for them, but you know, contract, that's part of the nature of, when you contract work. When you work as a contractor, you never know when you may lose a contract. There's no guarantee that the contract may not, your contract may be, um, may have reached its, uh, term. And they may wanna go to another, or another company to contract out, you know, um, to contract with, to put out services. So everybody there may end up leaving or they may keep some of them. That's part of, you know, working as a contract worker.
Um, well, um, I agree and disagree with that because like I said, as a contract specialist, um, I mean, you know, you have, you know, you, some, we have, might have a contract for five years, eight years or whatever. So say, for example, somebody just renewed a contract in twenty twenty four and then it, and it ends in twenty thirty and they got fired because of they lost, you know, so they got six years going or whatever. So it not, it doesn't really work like that because you, you know that, um, you know, even at the end of your contract, when your, your contract is nearing, they know that, okay, so, you know, you know, we gonna, um, you know, they don't come up again for a bid or, or either way, they know they got six months left on that contract, so they do whatever. But I'm talking about people that have contracts that have been, um, that are for five years and they might be, like I said, six months and two years and so that right there, um, and, and up until this Trump situation, there was no, um, indication or no reason for, for that contract to be terminated. They are just as, I mean, and I've talked to several, um, people, you know, that I know, um, just, um, that were contractors. I even speak to some of them that were, that I supervised when I was working and they was, you know, just, they have lost their jobs. And they had three years ago on their contracts. So I'm saying we could have contractors that live in Glen Arden. So I, I just don't wanna just say, well, we're just dealing with one set of people when, you know, the, you know, the ripple effect occurred because of the federal workers being, um, terminated. Um, you have federal, um, uh, contractors and again, as, you know, they have, you know, the contractors, you cannot treat them just like they're, they're, you know, they're not important. Because, um, a federal employee treating a federal contractor, um, you know, um, not well, they can do their job. So, um, it is, I mean, I just, I think it needs to be more to this or, um, I, I don't know how you can just distinguish the, the two, um, the, the.
Let me say, let me ask a question. Do federal contractors get, uh, federal retirement?
Um, no.
Okay.
And the federal workers. Uh, right.
Go ahead.
Okay, when I, when I, when I, um, I started in, 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 um, seventy seven, um, they had the civil service, um, uh, retirement. Um, in eighty, around about eighty-three, eighty-four, they decided to change the retirement to first and those people, um, that didn't switch over, so I stayed with, I think I did. But, um, they paid into social security and, um, and then they had, um, other, other ways of, um, I don't know exactly how they had paid, but they, um, they get social, when they retire, they get social security. They don't get, um, uh, you know, whereas mine come strictly from the federal government. They don't, they don't have that, that, um, retirement anymore because it was, um, uh, Bob, you know, it was, um, changed in eighty, I think it was eighty-four. So they do get social security. Social security does come under, um, you know, the federal. But anyway, I just have some, that's, that's my, um, take on it. Um.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, and I understand, you know, but I, I guess my thing is government has been using contractors for years and years and years and there's been plenty of people who have lost, the, their contracts have been lost and people have lost their jobs because, because the contract was lost, either the government wasn't satisfied with it or the government moved in another way. Or the government used a different contractor for whatever services they're trying to get. Um, whether it come down to, you know, janitorial or whatever, you know, I know that they bounce janitorial contracts like it's no tomorrow. Um, so that's what I'm saying. I understand what you're saying, but right now we have a limited amount of funds and I'm looking at the people who are directly affected by, you know, what President Trump did, you know, and that's individuals that were basically thought they had a job, a permanent job with the federal government and got, um, terminated through no fault of their own, just because, you know, through somebody who's not even a, a federal employee, you know, through, uh, Elon Musk, who's not even a, a federal employee, ain't, has nothing to do with the federal government, but yet he's running rough, rough side over this country like it's crazy when it comes down to these employees. And I just think that, I mean, if we could do something for contract workers, that's good, but right now I was focusing on, um, on, uh, federal employees who basically are, will have a letter of termin- who are, a letter of termination from OPM. That's, I mean, we can discuss it more if y'all wanna.
Yeah.
You know, kick up.
And I will just say this one other thing and then I'll yield, um, and there have, like I said, um, I, myself, I have, uh, lived through five, uh, reduction enforced, uh, RIFs or whatever you wanna call it, um, and that would be where people, they, um, uh, discontinued, um, different jobs. They discontinued the whole agencies. I was working, um, a couple of times I moved, one I was on Congress Avenue, then I was in Georgetown, so I'd never, um, thank God I never, uh, was out of a job. So I, you know, went from one place to the other and I wind up, the last time I wind up going to S- uh, Sootland, which I retired from there, but whole offices, I mean, they just reduced the, and it was, it didn't have anything, it was federal, federal people, it was federal employees. I saw meteorologists and, and mathematicians and physical scientists, um, uh, reduced down to a clerk typist. Uh, you know, so, um, it does, it, you know, it does happen to federal, um, employees too. I yield, um. Councilwoman Jones.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ferguson, my hand.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ferguson, my hand was up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay, sorry, Councilwoman.
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't take long. You um you 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 um raised a point about the contractors, but I wanted to ask um Councilman Hairston or Councilman Herring for, I heard the two hundred and fifty thousand in the or in the legislation itself, it doesn't say that. So can we put it in there? Like, I know it's it provides the criteria. Well, it says number one, the city, it's called the Federal Workers Relief Program. Then it says we'll provide five thousand dollars relief grant, then it goes into the criterias. And then for number four, it says the grants will be awarded until funding is exhausted or the end of the program on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So I think, and then it says this resolution will take effect. So I think it'll, um, if we're going to say two hundred and fifty thousand, we want to put it in this, um, we want to write it in there. That's what I was going to say.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Herring.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I was thinking about that, but I didn't know what number would be settled on. So I didn't put it in there also. I needed to get it put into the ordinance also so that it can be funded. So I was trying to hold, kind of holding out on that to see where it would go.
Yeah, I and I have to say that I learned that from you. You 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 always say like, what's the amount? So um so I just, that's what I saw, but uh whatever we ultimately decide on, that that was just what I wanted to state. That's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones.
Vice President, this is a um, the context of this is uh quite uh honorable, but I do have several questions. Um, Councilman Hairston, um, what is the maximum number of persons that you're thinking is gonna um need this service? Councilman Hairston, are you there?
I was trying to come off mute. Say it again.
Um, what is, what is the maximum number of people we're talking about for the to?
You bring you you clipping now, come back again.
What is the maximum number of persons that might take advantage of this uh service? Do you have any idea?
We could, I don't know if you could, we can tell you what's the maximum. We just kept it at fifty.
You want to cap it at fifty?
Yeah, we don't, we can't, like, how can we, we can't tell you the max until we know who's been affected.
Okay.
So all we can do is come up with a with a guideline. Like, how can we tell you the max? Like, how would we know that?
I mean, just, um, that's, okay, not necessarily the maximum number, but a a minimum number, a number of citizens that you think would uh be afforded this program.
About fifty.
Okay, so um, is this taxable income? Will this be taxable income toward to for the recipient?
Yes, anything over six hundred dollars is tax.
Okay, so now I I understand there's there's a lot of legal issues going on around surrounding the um displacement of these persons also. Um, if they're called back to work, will the city be reimbursed this five thousand dollars?
What you think the odds is of them being laid off and being called back to work with Trump?
Well, legally, if a judge determines that what they've done is uh illegal and that the persons need to be reinstated, uh, what were the odds that we knew that Trump was going to come in and do this? I mean, I know that uh Bill Clinton did it during his administration, but it wasn't as uh effect, not, I will not say effective. It wasn't as traumatic as this one is and President Obama also did the same thing, but it's not, it wasn't as uh traumatic. But this one is quite traumatic. We don't know where they're going to go with this uh legally. So will the monies, will there the persons that receive, if they receive this money, will they be uh asked to uh reimburse the money to the city?
I don't know. I feel like that's something to discuss. I'd cross that over to Councilman Herring.
Okay, so now the other thing is too, if they receive unemployment and we give them a five thousand dollar grant, uh, that will slow their unemployment up. So I'm thinking this would probably be given to, if if we uh enact this, it would be given to them after um they've exhausted their unemployment um benefits.
That's between them and unemployment.
Yeah, that's enough.
That's between, yeah, that's between them and unemployment. You know, I I guess my, I guess my thing is, um, oh, go ahead, Miss Councilwoman Jones. I don't know if finishing that.
Okay, um, if there's more than one person in a household, it doesn't matter, you know, how many people are in in a particular household, this is going to be for one household, it's going to be for whoever uh meets the criteria.
It's going to be for whoever meets the criteria.
Okay, and you said it's going to be funded through the reserves, the city reserves?
Yes, the 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 money that was saved from the rebate program.
Okay, so I'm thinking if if this is enacted through the city that um we would have, I I think we should hire a temporary grant administrator to administrate it because at this point, I'm sure the uh Finance Department is overloaded at this moment. We got two audits going on, the budget is getting ready to come up and um whatever the day-to-day operations of the Finance Department, um, Mr. Stewart's, Mr. Stewart and his team would need, would be overwhelmed with uh the homeowner uh rebate again, if that if that's passed and with this. So maybe uh a temporary grant administrator, since we already have a a grant writer, we could probably use his services, Mr. O'Connor, to um, you know, um, put this program into effect. You know, he would be the person that would or or a temporary grant administrator, whoever the council's pleasure is to do this. And those monies for that service would also have to come out of that uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you're uh asking for.
Hey, Mr. Stewart, do you think a task like this is something that you and the finance team can handle? Or you think this is too much for you guys to figure pass? Because I don't want to leave it for us to assume what they can handle. Right? So is this this is this too large of a task for you guys?
Um, President Ferguson, can I? Okay. Um, yes, I think um that project would be, um, I think it would be best for us to get someone in to assist us with that project.
Why is that? Is because it's too, is it too large of a task?
The issue is that we have to deal with, if that is passed, that we deal with the rebates. Um, the, you see, the whole factor matter is that we have to make sure that we review each um application that comes in and ensure that we are not duplicating or double dipping, right? Then with these two other program add into it, then it's it's going to be asking for a lot more for us to deal with. So I would prefer if we have um an additional hand or two in to assist with this. And remember too, we're in budget season. So um, you know, the the demand on the Finance Department will be um exhaust, uh well exorbitant.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Um, and also my final uh um thought on this is um, we we already know what uh the state government, state is going to do. Uh, Westmore sent out his five-point um agenda as to how he was going to try to help handle the situation of the federal workers by offering uh state jobs, uh offering um uh persons that have a background that can come in and help uh with uh the Education Department by teachers and other different uh uh areas in the uh education system throughout the state. The county is not offering anything because they are just at a deficit. Uh, and they just, uh, they're not, I I'm sure unless they have some jobs also. And I'm thinking that may be, I know we don't have a lot of job offerings, but I think that would be the 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 step in the right direction concerning this. If we have some jobs that we can offer persons, uh, that would be, because we already have a lot of projects on the table. And as Mr. Stewart said, his department, he would rep prefer that they, we hire an uh a grant admin, a a temporary grant administrator for the, if this comes to fruition, to uh administer this program, to assist him. And um we also have a lot of other projects on the table that have already been budgeted for the um Hay Street, Church Street, the sidewalks for Glen Arden Parkway, um, the um police station that we're still trying to obtain, the uh renovations of the uh council chambers and the nutrition center. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Ms. Jones, are you saying that uh since the county and the state is handling stuff that, so we right here on the ground, you are you saying that with us being on the ground, we shouldn't service our community like directly and just, you know, look forward to the county and the state to handle the issues that we see in our own community when we right here on the ground?
No, I'm not saying that we should not service our community. We service our community very well. We we are trying to service our employees very well. And I'm just saying that a a program like this, it needs to have more thought. And like I said, it should, we should also uh employ a a temporary um grant administrator to administer this program. No, I'm not saying that we should not service our our uh citizens. We do that very well in the city of Glen Arden. If you look at the uh other municipalities uh in comparison, we do very well with our citizens. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just asking from, you brought up the county and the state, so I was just trying to see where you was at with it. So that's, that was my only question. I ain't know what they had to do with it. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, ma'am.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, and I just want to say this, you know, I didn't see, I didn't hear this much walking back and forth on the programs when we were giving out the five thousand dollar intergenerational poverty grants. I didn't hear this much back and forth when we gave out three thousand dollar grants for tutoring. But now that we got a situation where we got people who may lose their homes, five thousand dollars is not enough, not a lot of money. That may be one or two house notes. Now there's, uh, you know, what's what's happening in the state, what's the state doing, what's the county doing? And what does, and as Councilman has to say, I don't care what the state and the county are doing because again, while you're waiting to get that state job, you losing your home. While you waiting to hear from the county, you 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 losing your home, you're not feeding your children. So I'm just saying, again, you know, people got hit unexpectedly with this craziness. They didn't even have time to prepare for it. They ain't giving, not even given any severance. But I'm just saying again, and as for uh uh the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is the, what we're going to give out. And if we need a grant writer or we need a temporary per person, take it out of professional fees, out of professional services or or I know we got a professional services line, take it out of there. But don't touch the bait, the the principle of the grant, which is two fifty, because we can at least service at least fifty people in 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 a um in the community. And I just, I just, it just, it just amazes me when I see things like this. But again, like I said, I didn't hear it so much debate when it came to giving out uniforms or giving out or 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 tutoring or the intergenerational, they got five thousand. I didn't hear anybody question, well, if they got five thousand dollars and they got a job, what about unemployment? What about this? What about that? But again, you know, the council can make the decision on how they, on how they want to make it. I just think that it's not, it's it's, you know, the 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 grilling that we get in on this program to help people who are unemployed and may lose their homes is really amazing compared to the grilling that was given for some of the other grant programs that we had that were not um that that were useful and they were good. But this here, I'm looking at somebody's livelihood and the difference between somebody either being homeless, doing at home or not having food to eat. Um, so, thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, I would like to add that um a lot of those um grants and the the tutoring and the different type of um programs, they did not come out of reserve, they came out of offer money. They also, I have received email from um a um lifelong citizen um that really um went in detail about um the concerns, even quote scriptures um concerning their um concern about going into the reserves and, you know, um this time of uncertainty and uh to the point where they were against the um the um retirement and, you know, often um the the retirement um that that was listed in the resolutions, um, and also even the incoming um council um increase. Um, there were some good points um that that citizen made. Um, it was saying that, you know, we, you know, need to be careful about um the funds, you know, just just use the funds and, you know, and make sure that we have basically um, you know, something stored away just in case of famine or whatever. So um I'm taking consideration with that, um, you know, you know, um, so I'm going to to um that um uh, again, it's being said that this termination is illegal. And if it's found to be illegal, then um historically, um, the government will pay people back the money that they um was um that they lost or they did not get. So in the event that this uh resolution or that it moves forward, maybe it should be something in there because they, um, you know, just like if you rift or if like when they, when when they close down the government, for instance, um, it was a month or two months or whatever or two weeks. You know, we don't get paid, but soon as they they um pass that budget, we 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 would get reimbursed, we would get the money, the fund. So even in that, um, if that was the case and the reimbursement was made, maybe something in the resolution should say that they, you know, because then they would be paid double. Because they they were, you know, if they were wrongly, which they was wrong, I mean, it's just terrible. I'm not, you know, but I would think that the government will pay them back all that they lost um as they have done in um in past, um, call it retro pay and they'll pay, they'll pay it back. If it's two months, then they will give their full two months. I mean, they will get their full check that they would normally have gotten if they worked. Um, now the other concern that I do have is um insurance, you know, I I I thought about that, you know, people um, most people had insurance um with their job, so that part about the, you know, uh, retro um pay, getting their pay back, that might need to be considered. If they get their, they get all their pay back, do they need to pay it back or just keep it? Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Jones, and then I'm going to yield the meeting over to President Curtis.
Right, thank you. And I also wanted to reiterate uh what uh Council Vice President said about um um the monies that for the other programs that we did uh were used with the offer funds that we got from the federal government that we had to spend uh was up and above any of the money that we had to use for the day-to-day operations for the city or for the projects that we wanted. And um also, the other thing is um.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, the other thing is if we decide to give, uh, if if this passes, uh, I'm thinking the money should go towards uh mortgages and utilities. I mean, the the persons wouldn't even, we, with a uh a grant administrator, they would get the uh the different bills or whatever, and then the monies would go to the different companies for mortgages and utilities. Um, I I don't know what the rest of the council's thoughts is on that, but uh I guess we'll, through this process, we'll we'll figure it out. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Miss President.
Oh, sorry, uh, one second. I see uh uh um Councilwoman Gill on hand first and I'll come to you, um, just Councilman Herring. And thank you, uh, Vice President Ferguson.
Thank you, Council President. I I was going to say that although I'm not the author of the this legislation or one of the sponsors, I I I, if if we are to go the route of pushing through this legislation, I don't think we should restrict it to what they should use it for because hardships are hardships. You have people who are probably paying their children's tuition. You have people who are probably paying other things. So I just um, I just wouldn't restrict it. If we're going to give people a grant, let's just give it to them, whatever the council decides. But if we're not, then we're not. But I would not, um, I personally would not want to restrict someone's expenses. That's just me though.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yes, and I was going to say the exact same thing because that restriction was not put onto the intergenerational poverty. Yes, and I was gonna say the exact same thing, because that restriction was not put onto the intergenerational poverty fund. Also, let me ask Mr. Stuart. Mr. Stuart, how much money did we keep of the offer funds? When we invoked that rule at the end of the year, so we can keep that money that we can put in our general fund?
Okay, so to the end of, sorry, Council President?
Yes.
Okay, so at the end of two thousand twenty thousand, twenty twenty-four, we had saved one point two million, which went into the reserve as a result of salary savings. And for this year through to December, we save an additional one point two.
Well, two point four.
Yes.
That would have been offer money.
That was for offer, yes.
Okay, so everybody's talking about offer money, offer money. You got two point four million dollars that we rolled over from offer that we, that we had not touched, that we had not used. So I'm not, I'm still not understanding the argument here when it comes down to, and as for refunding, people getting refunds back, did anybody ask for a refund from the people who got the intergenerational poverty move? Because they started working again, and they could have, they could have, we don't know, they could have got the check one day and got a, a, a retro check from, or a severance check from somewhere else. We didn't ask whether they had severance. We didn't ask if they, if they got severance. We just said, did you need help? And that's all I'm trying to say. Now, I, 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 people keep on talking about lawsuit, lawsuit. Do you know those lawsuits going, appeal after appeal after appeal, these lawsuits will be anywhere from a year to two years down the road before it gets to the Supreme Court. And, and, and in that time, and in the time, you want to have people that's homeless, you know, people that can't pay their, buy food, have people who's gonna be struggling. And like I said, five thousand dollars is not a lot. If that can keep them in their house for a month, that's good. But I'm just trying to help out people who need a hand up. And I'm not trying to sit here and put obstacles in the way, because those obstacles were not put in the way of a lot of these other programs that we did. And I just, I just think it's, yeah, I just, I'm, 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 I'm just kind of, yeah, I'm just, all I can do is just shake my head, because I know the programs that we had, and we had some very good programs. They helped out a lot of people. And all of these other restrictions and conditions were not put on those programs for those people. If they get, if they get the money back, they get the money back. If they get their money, if they get a job back, great. But in the meantime, while they're waiting, they're not gonna have to lose their home. And that's all I'm saying. Then they're gonna be able to feed their kids. They're gonna be able to pay tuition. They're gonna be able to pay for health insurance, since they're gonna, since they're losing their health benefits. You know, so that's, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm just, I'm, it's, yeah. All right. Thank you, Miss President.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I just wanna, to say that my, my whole point is, and that even with, with the, the intergenerational, all of that, I'm not even saying where the money came from. The criteria was, like you said, that they needed help. My concern is, again, is, because of the federal government employees lost their jobs and they were cut, there, there was a ripple effect. Why can't it be for anyone that was a federal employee or subcontractor? I mean, it's, it's, it's just like, it's just, well, like I said, the other grants, they didn't, you know, if, if you was affected by COVID and, and you met the criteria, that was, it was. They didn't say, it didn't pinpoint, because while the federal government employee is affected, so again, I mean, there are other people, because it's a ripple effect. So why can't it be something like, those that were affected, you know, by Trump's decision, I mean, I don't even know what the title would be. But it's just that, you know, you can have somebody, you know, there was a federal employee, and next door neighbor, there was a federal contractor, and their mortgage is due the same time somebody else's is due. So why can't it just be whoever was affected by this thing? That's what I'm, you know, because I mean, I just, it's just horrible. And I'm not trying to compare orange to apples, but I'm just trying to be straight across the board, because you might have somebody else come up, calling and saying, well, y'all passed this, you know, I was affected, I worked for, you know, for the federal government as a contractor, what about me? And I, you know, so I'm just trying to say, you know, just trying to consider everyone, maybe those that were affected by this action, period. Because, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't want to come off like I'm sympathetic, because at the bottom, at the end of the day, this is totally different than any grants we've given or anything we have dealt with to this point. I've never seen nothing like this, so. You know, I said, even I was thinking about the fact that, you know, as a, as a federal employee, my insurance, health insurance for my kids, myself, was involved in it. So it's not just the fact of not having money for food and mortgage, but you know, medical as well. So I'm just saying, maybe it might be considered to include anyone who was affected by that. I mean, and they could prove that they were directly working for an organization that was literally closed down, just, just totally abolished. You know. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. So what about those employees that may have, because in each, in most federal buildings that I've been in, they've also had these little commissary areas where people worked, came to work, where they served food or they did different things. And they not, they're not necessarily, but because of the action of the, of, Trump, President Trump, because of his action, they also were affected because there's no government, there's no employees in the building. So the little commissary area, that closed down too. We may have some people that live in the city of Glen Arden that fit in that category. What about them? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this topic before we move on?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'd say, I'm just kidding. What you think? How you doing, man? You late? What's up? You all right?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you. All right. Okay. Well, we'll move on to R dash forty-one dash twenty twenty-five resolution to adopt new rules and regulations for the Gold Room. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. On January thirty-first, the city manager, Charles Simpson, sent out an email with the, updated whatever needed to be done for the Gold Room. I think now that we've had over a year, because, no, it was February twenty-something when that resolution came, February twenty twenty-four, when that resolution came up to be, presented to the council for approval. And now I think Mr. Simpson has all of the, changes put in and done. And I think that now we need to move forward with the rules and regulations for the Gold Room, so that the Gold Room staff can move forward. We need to move forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Counselor, is there any discussion on this topic? Anything in the, the rules?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Harry? I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'll just be honest, I haven't been able to read all of it. My whole thing, my question is, where are we with repasses in that terms of bringing their own food? Because again, like I said, you know, when people have these deaths, you know, it's enough that they have to deal with that. And then usually, you know, somebody's, you know, the family or friends or church, you know, prepares food for them and, you know, and they can do a waiver. You know, that says, you know, the city is not liable for anything like that. So was that, I, I know we was going back and forth with that. Where, where are we with that?
That was not included in the rules and regulations, because that is a state law and a county law that, the venue that we have, the Gold Room, we cannot have unlicensed caterers. We have to have a licensed caterer. Because of the food poisoning outbreak at another venue, the Prince George's Ballroom, that law went into effect from the state. The COVID laws established it. The county picked it up. The health, the health department will tell you, you cannot write a waiver for, to override a law. That's like asking to write a waiver. Can I ask the chief that I have a waiver to keep me from, if I run a stop sign, I don't get any tickets or I won't be charged? No, there's a law in place that says you cannot do this. And I think that Ms. Bun also put that in the, the rules and regulations, that the Prince George's County laws and, thank you, Council President.
Vice President Ferguson, was that all?
Yeah, I mean, I just kind of flipped through something, and I saw, I didn't get a chance to read it, but I saw something that says, master catering liability waiver. So I'll just look over that and see what it says. It's, actually, it's the third page from the, from the back. And it talks about a document serves as a waiver. So I'll just read that, and maybe I can come back to it, because I don't, because it does say Gold Room liability waiver, and it, and it says master catering liability waiver, but it may not be what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, let me just say, this is the exact same document that came out last time, but no changes. And I just looked through it, and the, requirements for catering is still there. You cannot take out your own food. You gotta take out paper. You can only take food out of styrofoam containers. I got, I went and reviewed the meeting. As a matter of fact, we discussed this on June third of twenty twenty-four, when we went through it, and the council gave consensus on everything that they wanted to, they wanted to, change in that contract. And I'm actually gonna mock up the contract and mock it up with what we, what we agreed to, and send it to the council, because this is not, and I'm not sure why they keep submitting the same document over and over again. I just, I'm just not understanding it. I knew it was a reason that it was being brought back up, because again, nothing changed in it. It's the exact same way, and we can do what we want to do in our room. And I wish that, that, that catering thing is just, it's driving me crazy every time I hear that. I know it's not true, and we all know it's not true. And we agreed that we will allow people to bring in their own food, as, as long as they sign a waiver. And that's not in here. So yes, I got all, I went, sort of, the June third meeting is when we discussed it, and that's when we came down to, and I got a consensus on a lot of things that we were, were supporting, wouldn't support. So I'm gonna mark up mine and I'll send it out.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. Similarly, to what my other two colleagues stated, I am still not comfortable moving this forward, because if you, in Prince George's County, if you are hosting a private event, you can do catering, of your own. It does not have to be a hired caterer. If it's, if you're serving things to the public, if it's a public event, then you have to have a caterer. And if I may, Council President, may I share my screen?
One second. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can you all see the screen?
It's coming up. There you go.
This is an email from May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, where I quoted what the person from Prince George's County stated. And we can see right here in yellow, it says, "The renter may provide food such as a potluck, catered food, or prepackaged food to invited guests during a private event." Okay, so it says that. Now, down here, it says, "If food is being served during a public event and or being sold, then the renter is required to provide a food service permit." So they're, they make the variation right then and there. So if you are doing a private event, if I'm throwing a baby shower, it's not open to the public, it's open only to my guests, that is okay for me to have my own food. It clearly says it right here, potluck, right here. So I just want to say that there are other facilities in Glen Arden and outside of Glen Arden, in Prince George's County, that allow people to bring food. So I don't understand why we keep beating around this over and over and over and over again. And I will say this one more time, well, hopefully for the last time, the council, we voted for the Gold Room rules. We stated unanimously, whether it was, well, we had enough votes where people stated what their preference were for the catering, period. Now, if we're gonna get in trouble, we could clearly cite that, but for me, I just get tired of seeing the same thing over and over and over again, when we clearly stated what we want as legislation is concerned. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. So if this waiver is written, I would like to see it presented, have Mr. Kapinski do the research and have him present us a waiver and see what he says.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Bun?
Yes, so there was a waiver that was attached to, the information that was provided to you guys. So I'm not sure what waiver, you know, we were talking, need to include, but there was a waiver included in that. My second question is, is this for just repasses? That they're bringing outside food in for? Or is it for all events? And then also, I do know that, I believe someone told me that, like even American Legion, they, they charge for, to bring outside food. So I don't know if we wanted to go that route of like charging for additional charge to bring outside food, because there is an issue when, you know, a lot of people are involved in the not knowing the, the policies and procedures for the room. That's my only concern, and I only can just go off of my experience and based off of what I see. And, you know, that, but it's basically up to you guys or what you want to do. But there was a waiver connected to that.
Thank you, Ms. Bun. Councilwoman Gill?
Yeah, I'm not the majority here. I'm just going to answer for myself. I think that it should not just be restricted to repasses, because people have different economical means. I do think that if it's an event that's being held at the Gold Room and it's open to the public, right? Like if we're having whatever event and it's for everybody to come in, right? It's not just invite only, it's everybody to come in. Then yeah, that's, that's something where you want to have a catered, a licensed caterer. But if you are, if, if we have a citizen or someone outside of Glen Arden who wants to rent the facility for their own private event, then whether it's a repass or a baby shower or a birthday party for whomever their guests are, their restricted guests are, then that to me is open to them bringing their own caterers. And I will, again, I, I even scrolled down further to the email that was sent by the person from Prince George's County. It says it right here. It says, "All food served to the public must be from an approved source licensed food service facility." This is the important part right here. Private parties are not required to use licensed facilities, although it is recommended. That's the important part. Now, if you're saying that the Gold Room is a public venue and it's gonna be holding a public event, then you have to use a licensed caterer. But keep in mind, there's a reason why the second sentence right here is saying what it is saying. It's a private event. So if citizens are here trying to hold a private event, and they want to do it either in the Gold Room or at the other community space at Woodmore Town Center, it is legal. So we need to stop saying that it's not, this is not to you, Ms. Bun. We need to stop saying it's illegal in Prince George's County. It is not illegal. Sorry, that was it. Sorry, that was it.
Alright, so. I see the waiver, uh, Ms. Bun, um. Now, are we saying that the language in the food section is not what we wanted?
That question for me?
Uh, I guess I'm, I'm, actually I'm thinking this to the council. I know Mr. Harry said that he had, Councilman Harry said he had a, a mockup of what we agreed to, um, a while ago. Um, and Ms. Bun said that she has the, the waiver connected. So, uh, Councilman Harry, I'm, I just, um, going through it now, um. Is the mockup that you have different from what is here?
It still has in here catering. And it talks about catering. Being, you know, what you call it. There's nothing in here that says, um. That you can bring your own food in. Which is what we, it's not in here. That you do not have to use a caterer, you can bring your own food and, um, it also has in here, like I said, the styrofoam to go. You, you gotta use styrofoam or plastic to go containers, we say. Take it out and whatever you want to take it out in. Um, that's still in here, um. And I was talking about, um. And we're talking about refunds, we were talking, we were saying, you know. You're gonna remove, uh, charging the people thirty-five dollars for, if they have to ask for another refund check. Council agreed to that. Uh, even with down to the chairs, you know, limited, it says it's limited, limiting people to eight chairs per table. When we are like, let them sit, if they want to sit ten chairs, they can, no more than ten chairs. If you want ten chairs to a table, they want, they're gonna have ten chairs to the table. I'm saying that this, this really has not changed at all. And this is basically the same document, that's why it's being brought up so quickly, because, um, it hasn't changed.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bun, is that a new hand?
He, yes, so when we, when we had, initially had the, the, that conversation, the first conversation. I was, I was out, I believe on leave and, um, I believe the city manager and, uh, Councilman. Herron and the council, um, the past council clerk got together, they, um. Did the corrections, so I actually was going off of what was corrected during that time, so. Um, I believe that that was, um, the new, um. Form that was rules and regulations that was corrected, um, at that time, um. So I'm not sure what happened when I, you know, from there. We did submit this to Councilman Herron again to ta- take a look at it again, um, but, you know, I. I just know that it's been a year, um, so I think we should try to make some type of. Changes soon, whatever it's gonna be, um, because we do need to get something in place.
Thank you, Ms. Bun. Councilman Jones?
That's exactly why I brought this back to the floor, because it needs to get done. If you have some changes, if there's something you want to do, I'm requesting legal sufficiency on the waiver. Whatever needs to be done, we need to move forward and get this done so that the gold room, uh, persons can move forward. In doing the job that we, uh, asked them to do. If the, if there's some changes that have, you wanted to have made, let's say, let's go to the table and with the city council, I'm, I'm sorry, with the, um. Council, um, the city manager and Ms. Bun and give, uh, uh, present those changes. Get these things done so that we can move forward as a city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Harry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, let me, let's say in offense to Ms. Bun, what happened was we made the changes, we made the corrections and somehow or another, that. Did not get to the council. We don't know what happened to it, we don't know why the changes weren't, why the copy that came to the council was not the one that we made the changes. When, you know, uh, the previous clerk was here, so we did make all the changes and. She probably got, and what she probably got is what she thought was changes, but it was actually the original one that we had before, so. In offense to her, she did not actually get the copy with the changes in. So that's why we're back here now.
Councilman, do you have a copy of it?
Well, I don't know what happened to the copy that we had. You know, so that's why I went back to the video, went back to the June third meet, June third meeting and captured everything that we, uh, got a consensus on changing. And I'm gonna mark it up and just send it out, so it just took me a while to get to the video.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gill?
Yeah, sorry, Council President, I was gonna probably suggest something that I guess. Uh, um, colleague on the council is already doing, but I was going to say maybe we could just send the recording of the meeting. Where we went through the entire gold rule, I'm sorry, the entire, um, gold room and, and Woodmore Town Center Community Room rules. And marked, we verbally were going through it, because I, I will say for me, Ms. Bun said it's been a year, for me it's been over a year. And it's, it's exhaustive that it's the same exact conversation again and again and again about the same exact sections. And so I just want to express my frustration is not directed towards anyone in particular, is just frustrated. At this whole scenario happening again, because we stayed on a call for over two to three hours. Going dissecting this and it's just feels like time was wasted for no reason at all.
Yes, thank you, uh, and I'm asking if this can be done, I mean, this is a work session, so we have it here. Um, and that the changes be available, um. By the time our, uh, public hearing is next week, so that we can get it out and still vote on it at the regular session. Um, because it has been a long time and so it's out there, I mean, it's, I recorded. Uh, so let's just get it done and move forward. The only thing that should hold us, but there's, really shouldn't be anything that holds us up. It was just get the changes in there, the waiver, we can still get legal sufficiency for, we can still vote on, uh, the gold room. Uh, rules the way the council has, um, decided that it should be. Alright. Next up is. R forty-two dash twenty twenty-five resolution to adopt general orders for the Glen Arden Police Department. Um, Councilman Jones?
Council, Council President, um, this is also a resolution, um, that, uh, we need to move forward so that the police department will have. Um, updated general orders, um, what they did, they spent money to go to Lexapro and use them to help. Uh, formulate new general orders, our general orders, when, uh, Chief Bryant came in, had not been done for a while. He's come in and had the general orders sat down and had the general orders, uh, looked at. So to make sure that the things that we need to align with the county and the state are in there, because Lexapro, we use Lexapro, I'm not sure how much money, uh. It was, uh, Lexapro charges to use their service, but this is a service that's used by all the municipal police departments and all of the, um. Uh, the county police department also, and they are a, a team of lawyers that sit down and make sure that whatever comes out of the, the state. Um, or federal guidelines for police, um. Uh, guidelines, they make sure that those, um, orders are put in this general, uh, packet. And present it. Now, there's cer- there are certain things in the, in the general orders that are, um, privy, not privy, but, um. Common to the city of Glen Arden, so, uh, Chief Bryant has put those things in there. I know the document is over five hundred pages, took me a minute to read it, some of it, but, um, I got through pretty much most of it. But, um, and I see what they're, um, the changes for Glen Arden, but, um. Uh, it, I, um, did some research, uh, in this job as a council person. We all know there's a lot of reading, a lot of research, a lot of people that we can go to to get re- a lot of resources that we have that we can go and get information. So I called one of the, uh, other chief polices in the, in the, at a municipality, who has been a chief police for a long time in a municipality. So he was saying, you know, normally when the general orders come out, they usually don't, sometimes they don't, uh, do a resolution. But when they've been revamped for af- after many years, they do a resolution to the council to accept the general orders. They use, uh, the resources with, of Lexapro to help them to create and, uh, bring forth the general orders, so, uh. Uh, I know there were certain council persons that might have had questions they wanted to ask the chief, but we never had the, 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 the meeting to do this. So, uh, once again, this is something that needs to be, um, taken care of by the council. And we need to move forward so that the police department can move forward with the, um, policies and procedures that they are required to, um, follow. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I agree that this needs to move forward. Is there any other questions or, um, comments on the general orders?
Yes, um, again, this is, this is six hundred pages long and, and we shouldn't be rushed through this thing, um. I know I'm not gonna be rushed through it, um, again, it takes time to go through this, you gotta do your research on it. And just FYI, our code clearly states on chapter twenty-eight that. Any general order's gotta be approved by the city council, so you can't circumvent that process, it has to come through us, so I just wanted to say that. Alright, thanks, Bun.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Any other comments? Um, I do have a question, Councilman Harry, so, um, it has been some time. Well, to the general counsel, but. Directed towards you, Councilman Harry, right now, uh, how much time do you need?
Still need some time, I, I could, I could have read War and Peace quicker than I read, can read this thing. I mean, this is a, a long drawn out process and you gotta research, you gotta see what is in there is really needed for the city of Glen Arden. And I'm not gonna sit there and take everything that somebody say at face value, because everything may not be needed for, uh, city of Glen Arden. So I mean, I'm getting through it, but it's just, it's taking time, you know, and I think every councilman, time to get through it, you know, it's not just, I don't rubber stamp nothing from nobody. Just where they said it in front of my face, I don't care who prepared it, that's just me, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just need some time.
Yeah, and I agree, I, I, I'm, I'm not disputing that you need time, I'm just trying to have some level of expectation. You know, as we discussed last week about, um, um. Just things not getting done, I wanna have at least a level of expectation of when we can circle. Circle back or how much time do council members need so that we could put, uh, at least a target date, uh, on the map? I'm not saying it has to be tomorrow, I'm not even saying it has to be next week, I'm not even saying it has to be next month. Uh, but having some level of expectation, so this isn't something that we just continue to kick down the road.
Well, let's do, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, at a minimum thirty days, thirty more days, at minimum.
Okay, alright. Any other comments on thirty days needed? Alright, so then we will give council members, uh, to, until the next work session to, you know. Go through the document, chief is, uh, uh, available, we can actually bring him back at the next work session to answer any questions. If you have questions in between them, I'm pretty sure he'll make himself available, uh, but at least some level of attentive. Um, expected date to have gone through the documents is, uh, another thirty days, alright?
Uh, Ms. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, so if Lexapro did it, why wouldn't Lexapro be here to answer the questions on why they put it in the, in the legality of? So I mean, if we have any questions, we should be able to ask it, answer it, ask, uh, ask it of Lexapro since they created this document. Even though they got input from the chief, but again, legally, you know, we may have questions that, maybe a legal question.
Okay, uh, chief, I see you on muted, your response?
Good evening, everyone, um, pretty much the general orders, um, they got it by the chief of police, the authority of the chief of police. So for each, um, each municipality, um, we give, they ask the chief of police. Um, would they, the expectations for their municipality? So we take, um, many hours and we go over the general orders, each session and what's relevant for my municipality. So that's how they do it, um, their job is to make sure, they look at the legal aspect of it, um, for the state of Maryland. And so pretty much it's defined, um, what I see fit for, um, for the city of Glen Arden. And pretty much how they base it is on the, um, neighboring municipalities, um, as a guide. Um, what we doing with neighboring municipalities and so forth, um, but they, they have a team of like, um, forty-three lawyers. Um, and they follow the legislation, um, under, um, House Bill ten sixteen. Um, it's, uh, it's how they follow that guide and the lawyers, they go by that and they update. They update the general, general orders following that guideline, um, but it's pretty much, um, under authority of the chief of police, how we set the, um, general orders. So in some municipalities, they might have more than, more general orders than me, or they might have less, it all depends, um, on that. And then it depends on the future, um, of your, or your department. Um, if you look at ours, you know, we're trying to have a bicycle unit, hopefully when we get, when we get a building, um, have a bicycle unit, we're trying to grow. Um, so you know, you put things in there, uh, pin, depending on the future, where you're trying to grow your agency, so you'll see some things in there like that, um. And then with some of the things like, we'll never have a homicide unit, um, not during my time anyway. So we still defer some of that stuff where Prince George's County still take the lead and things like that, so that's the way it's, um, it's done. That's, um, did I ask you a question, uh, Councilman Herr? I gave you some insight?
Yeah, I got some insight, but I still, again, would like to have a representative from there to come, because again, it, it really comes to, again, like I said, what. You know, um, is needed in the city of Glen Arden, so I haven't looked at it. But there may be some things in there, I may have questions about whether it's needed, whether it's not, why is it in there, you know?
Okay, yeah, I can get, I'll, I'll set some up, I'll set something up and see if, um, I can get, um. The lady that helped me do the policy, I can get her, I'll see if I can get her in the meeting, um, Ms. Vicky Cutliff. Um, we, we spent many hours on it, so I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to her tomorrow and see if I can get her on the meeting, off of next month, alright?
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Right, um. R dash forty-three, twenty twenty-five resolution to declare code enforcement vehicle as surplus, are any questions on that resolution from council members?
Yeah, what built, I mean, do, have you seen the backup to this? It's like a brand new car, two thousand and twenty-four. The backup that I have on mine is a brand new, it looks like a two thousand and twenty-four. Something of the, um.
I'm sorry, may I speak?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
That was, um, a mistake, that was inadvertently attached to the wrong, um. Resolution.
Okay, can we get the correct, correct vehicle? Was it Harry? Was that it?
Yeah, that's it, thanks.
Alright. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Another thing, um. Yeah, is there any other, is it, what, is it just a vehicle or is there? Is it just a vehicle that's surplus?
Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Excuse me, sorry, uh, oh, so we have a vehicle, uh, the co-vehicle that we would like to surplus. And then we have about, uh, four pieces of furniture and a CPU which is on a different resolution. For surplus.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, so.
It's a separate one.
Yeah, we get that list, that'd be great, uh, same, it's all together, R dash forty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's not all together, it's a different resolution, a resolution to declare city property as surplus. And approve auction, any questions on that resolution? Uh, but as Councilman Harry said, I'll get a list of everything, that'd be great. Hearing none? Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Just a quick question, we're fine with the two resolutions, you just need a list for the other items, I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, next up is R dash twenty twenty-five of. Alright, next up is R dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution accepting Corinic Construction to build elevator. Mr. Simpson, I'll pass this to you.
Evening. Um, so, um, I have finally got in contact with, uh, Corinic Construction. Per, I believe it was the October regular meeting, it was stated that, uh, we, we should proceed with an RFP, RFP unless we're able to, um, confirm, uh, Corinic. Uh, does have government contracts and they are available. Um, so, uh, after some time, it was a bit difficult, um, to get in contact with them, no, no fault of Corinic. Um, just some communication issues between myself and the architect. Um, I was able to reach, uh, a Mr. Brunson Cooper, uh, who is on the line and is available, uh, for comment, um, to discuss, um, the proposal that was originally received, uh, by Ms., or presented from the Architect Group, Red Leaf Architect Group. Um, and in doing so, um, I asked about the numbers relative to what was provided. Um, after meeting with him, he had stated that they were originally different numbers, and I said, really, we, we need to confirm that. Um, and if you can provide that, um, I do have him on the line to be able to provide some context in that. Um, since then, we have gone through, uh, the project thoroughly, did meet with Red Leaf Architect Group, uh, as well. The initial meeting took place with Mr. Cooper, um, actually in the, uh, Dias area, um, where, uh, we're proposing the elevator. Um, and then after that, uh, I said we needed to get ahold of Ms. Felder so that we could work together to figure out what these numbers are, uh, or, or, uh, why am I seeing some of the differences in the numbers? Um, so we were able to drill down some of that. Uh, we were also able to communicate with, uh, Ms. Felder to get a better understanding of a few things. Um, and Corinic Construction has also done, uh, and is currently working with Red Leaf, uh, on another project. Uh, Corner Construction is also, uh, Prince George's County, uh, contract holder, uh, and has done work with Prince George's County. I think the most recent work, uh, or I should say, one of the work that's closest to us, uh, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Cooper, please feel free to chime in, uh, is the fire department building, uh, that was, uh, built, uh, off of Hill Road and Central Avenue. Um, I know the council has several different questions. I did provide, um, their proposal. Um, the corrected proposal, if you will, um, and now I am presenting to you Cornix, uh, Corinic Construction, um, as my recommendation for us to proceed with the elevator and lobby project. Uh, with that, I can open things up, uh, relative to questions involving, uh, the updated numbers, uh, and hopefully discuss some plans and, and some explanations relative to uh, any deltas or discrepancies, uh, related to numbers that we've seen. Uh, I also just wanna add that, uh, I am waiting for CPJA. Um, they, I'm hoping they'll have some new information, uh, to also be able to, uh, use that to compare, uh, the information that we've received.
Mr. Simpson, are there any questions from council?
Yes, Ms. President.
Councilman Harry.
Okay, I have a number of questions. Uh, Mr. Simpson, why is this being, why is this even being brought forth? If we have not heard from our own engineers on, you know, what the, about the price of this, um, project? Um, I'm not understanding the, why it's being brought forth when we haven't even heard. We don't know. We don't know if this is the best price or not.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I think, uh, and, and Mr. Harry, you and I had a brief discussion before about this and, and the reason, um, is, uh, for that meeting in October, it was stated to go with an RFP or confirm that Corinic does have, uh, government contracts that we are able to piggyback off of. I was able to do so, um, and ask them to please provide, uh, updated or a more clear and concise, uh, proposal, uh, along with some schedules, um, to be able to give us those numbers relative to that la- that particular October meeting. Um, it's up to the will of the council, of course, uh, to go with whatever information you wanna provide. I am still waiting to obtain the additional information from CPJA, um, but I thought it would be, uh, reasonable and I thought it would be informative to be able to get this information considering, uh, that Ms. Felder and Red Leaf Architect had given the recommendation from Corinic initially.
Um, the resolution that we actually passed, for clarification's sake, actually said to put out an RFP and also request a quote from, uh, Corinic. Um, so, and I know the RFP was not done, but I guess my issue also is that they came in, the first quote we had, Corinic, um, the first quote we had, it was nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Now the quote that we're getting is one point four million dollars. So what is that four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar difference? Cause I'm completely amazed that it jumped that high. And I can only assume that it jumped that high because the other quote was like one point two, one point three. Yes, so why is this big leap? So you need to let me know. You're bringing this to us, so what is the big, what is that big four hundred thousand dollar leap? From what they gave us of nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to one point four million?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, so if we go back to that original information that was provided, there were a lot of questions and a lot of, uh, things that were clearly answered. Um, and again, um, Ms. Felder had recommended that information based upon, uh, some numbers that she had received from Corinic. However, uh, I believe at that particular time, Ms. Felder, uh, was under the impression of a particular budget and asked, uh, if certain things can be moved or adjusted. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, the original proposal that was sent to Ms. Felder was a bit different from that. Um, and that, uh, can be verified as well. Um, but to answer some specific questions relative to the differences in the proposals, um, I'd like to defer to Mr. Brunson Cooper to be able to speak on, uh, some of those things. Uh, after seeing the cur- the original, uh, or discussing the original proposal, um, which, which matched very similar to, uh, other information we had. Um, I've, I, I wanted to make sure we had this information provided and went through, uh, the express, uh, will of the council relative to be making sure we have detailed information, making sure they are a government contractor, a company that we can piggyback, they, they can piggyback off of, uh, state and or county, uh, contracts. Um, and that brings us here, uh, this evening.
Okay, just.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Harry.
Before we move on to him, I just wanna, well, once can I share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Let's see, uh, okay.
You might wanna make the numbers big, uh, uh, increase the, um, the zoom.
It didn't, okay.
At the bottom right.
How's that?
Uh, that's better. I have three screens, so I can put on my big screen. That's good, that's good.
So, um, basically, before we move forward, I went and I, um, compared Corinix, Corinix, uh, first quote with the second quote. Um, and as I said, down here, it's showing a four hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar increase. I guess my question would be, all these other increases, general, general requirements went from twenty-nine thousand eight hundred to sixty-one thousand six hundred, which is a fifty-two percent increase. Um, select, selective demo, forty percent increase, shorting, seventy percent increase. I mean, I'm try, I'm trying to figure out what, what didn't you see in the first quote? When you looked at it the first time, that you saw in the second one, uh, vapor barrier, seventy-five percent increase. Uh, drywall, uh, uh, forty percent increase, went to twenty thousand dollars. Elevator, from ninety-two thousand to a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, seventeen percent increase. And I mean, it's just like major increases all throughout this whole thing, to the tune of a thirty percent increase overall. From what the original quote was to what we have now, which is way more than what we had with Nichols. I mean, we might as well roll back to Nichols at one point two million. So I'm just, I just wanna know what is, why the major increases in this, in this project, when we were given a quote of nine sixty-six, nine ninety-six, now to one point four?
Yeah, um, the Mr., uh, was it Mr. Brunson? I can't see him now.
Yeah. Yeah, I see. Can you hear me okay? Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, what I'll do is just give your first an explanation, overall explanation, and then I can, um, let my estimator, John, kinda, um, put some, some, you know, kinda put a bow around it and understand what happened. Um, when I was contacted by Mr. Simpson, as he mentioned earlier, um, there was a, a question of, hey, who was trying to get in touch with you, needed to speak about where we are, we, we haven't, we're trying to move forward with the elevator. So when he called, I said, okay, well, what, what are we talking about? What are we looking at? I can look back into my numbers. The first question was, um, well, I was like, what numbers are they? It was one was the one, it was nine hundred and ninety, I believe nine hundred and ninety-six, I'm looking at the screen, yes, nine hundred and ninety-six. But our original quote, as I talked back to my estimator, was one point two five. So we have emails that we sent to the architect. Um, come to find out, she mentioned that we needed to reduce our budget, and, and just so you know, everything that we have here, my understanding, i- is a budget. We still need to go out for hard numbers, um, but the budget is based on what we feel that the drawings that we have, um, need to happen. Now, the drawings that we have also are not finalized. They still do not have civil, um, civil plans. I expect those, um, from the architect. She mentioned that she was gonna send them to me, uh, last week. I didn't receive them. I just reached out to her again today, um, but I expect to get those from her, um, in short order. Um, the goal is to put that, those drawings out to the, uh, market and get hard pricing. But as regards to how we came up with the nine ninety-six, it was based on, based on a conversation between my estimator and the architect in regards to reducing the, uh, the budget. Now, she said that she was gonna basically reduce the drawings also to meet that budget. She has not done that yet. So, um, when you look at the one point two against the one point two, I'm looking, seeing here, um, that was the same. But what I did talk to Mr. Simpson about was also adding a contingency to our number. So because of where we are right now in regards to the, in regards to it, the contingency can be held on my side, or the contingency can be held on your side. Uh, but at any point, it's not utilized by us, it's only utilized by you all, uh, to make sure that everything is covered because of the quote-unquote unknowns that are still left out there. That's the general statement in regards to it. Um, John, are you on?
Yes, I'm on. Um, so in regards to this RFP process, we, uh, in our relationship with, uh, Ms. Felder, we, I had submitted a price for almost the exact number you see there, one point two, one point two four, um, to Tanika. As, uh, we talked through it, she discussed the budget concerns of the, of the city and, uh, you know, with potential changes on her end, um, could we submit a budget that was more cost efficient? Uh, and that is how we got to the nine nine six proposal back in September. Um, after review, this, these last couple of weeks, the drawings still have not changed yet. Um, I guess the council has not seen our original price based off of the current set of drawings, which was similar to the other contractor's proposal.
So one of the other things that I would say is, I, I don't disagree with having a different, um, I mean, coming in now, currently understanding where you guys are, I don't disagree with having a independent estimate, um, from what I'm hearing Mr. Simpson is doing. Um, but at the same time, none of these, I, I don't think any of this has gone out to market for hard numbers. I think the only numbers that we do have, um, John, is from the elevator company, correct?
Correct. Uh, we solicited Thistern and Crup on, on their pricing, um, and you know, the, the rest of this is based off our historical knowledge and, you know, our past experience with elevator additions. So, w- we believe it is a, a, a safe number, our original submission. But, uh, to Brunson's point, this is what we call budgetary pricing, where, where there's not been hard subcontractor input across the board.
Alright, Councilman Harry?
Okay, so I guess my question is this, why, why are we even getting this proposal? If these numbers are gonna change, we can't even budget based on that, because again, you're saying that once you get hard numbers, the number may even go up.
It won't go up. No, no.
It won't go up.
No, sir. Yes, sir, we're talking, and our conversations over, a lot has transpired over the last two weeks. And, uh, but maybe, but is it two weeks or three weeks, Mr. Simpson? Nothing since we talked. Might have been three, but, um, the idea was, we went through and we even started talking about how we could value engineer, um, the plans to help support, you know, uh, reducing it, even reducing it. So the idea is, is not to be, this is, this is when I, I, I guess I can say, when I work with other, uh, owners, we look at something called as a guaranteed maximum price. And what happens is with the guaranteed maximum price, there's a, a combination of working with the GC and the architect to come up with a plan that comes up with the total number. Total number, but that also includes, it would, it, it would also be at a point when you go out to market and get backup also. This is at a, this is definitely at the beginning stage, and it's just budgetary. But with a budgetary number, if you're looking to approve an overall number, this number would go, my, in my, in my opinion, this number would go down. I can tell you right now, you can take out that one oh two and use it on your side or my side, it doesn't matter. But it's not for me to, it's not for us to utilize. Then from that standpoint, what happens is when we go out to hard bids on, on the market, we feel, we'll basically come back confident and say, hey, our numbers are within this, in, in this area.
So, um, I guess my concern is also that I looked at the first quote, the top of the page. Her, the, her Red Leaf Architectural drawings dated, whatever it was dated at that time.
Yes, sir.
A quote of nine ninety-six, and so what, you said the drawings haven't changed, but you're coming back with a quote of one point four?
I understand your concern. I a hundred percent understand your concern. If I did not know the backstory, I would be concerned also. So when regards to that, her questioning and asking us to reduce our number to meet a budget, but she had not changed those drawings yet, that's why we basically, to you, to saying to you now is that since the drawings have not changed, uh, and those, those, those recommendations are not taken into consideration, how can you, you know, we, we, we can't say to Mr. Simpson that we can do it for the nine nine nine. I also said, hey, we have an original quote here that is based on the drawings as a budget, that's this number. So he, I gave him that number, and that's what he recommend, he said, well, wow, you're right in line. So I was like, okay, so that's, that's the, that was how the conversation happened. So I understand where you're coming from in the beginning, is that I, I would be concerned too, with like, okay, wait a minute, can you build it for this? We, we can, we can build, build to your budget, but we're gonna have to figure out how to reduce it to that budget. That's, that's the question. And, and I need the architect to work with me on that.
Yeah, I, I, I honestly, I would, I would pull this piece of legislation, um, again, I don't. I guess my thing is too many things up in the air, there's too many variables up in the air, and I don't, I don't like having this conversation about the architect being here. Um, yeah, I see her name's been thrown out there, Red Leaf has been thrown out there over and over again, and I like to hear her side of what's, what's what, and what we actually looking at and what we actually gonna get. Like I said, I want this elevator built as much as anybody, but I'm not gonna break the city trying to do it. Um, again, like I said, I look at these numbers and, like I said, these increases are, are. Um, again, like I said, I look at these numbers and, like I said, these increases are, are, yeah, something. Um, again, even with that contingency, I, I'm, uh, a lot of major projects.
Mister, Mister Harry, uh, and I, and I, again, I, I hear what you're saying. The idea is, really is to, I would say, to take, I, I don't need a, a total contract at the moment. Right? I understand about how we can straight form, go to it, but the idea would be is to put together a full package for you that includes backup and everything else that shows you where our numbers are. And I'd be working with Mister Simpson and the architect to finalize that number. Now, we did do a kind of a preliminary, uh, uh, schedule and timeframe on what it would take. Um, we sent that to Mister Simpson also, um, in regards to, uh, the elevator, if we started, you know, started even doing the pricing now, go ahead, fi- and remember, this hasn't been finalized in, in for permit also. Cause, uh, we actually talked to her about getting the permit finalized. Um, the preliminary estimate would, preliminary schedule would show you now, I believe the end, middle to end of October. And that's with the particular, um, pricing going simultaneously and finalizing the permit and getting, uh, I would say being released to start, uh, what's the, good looking here. I have a timeframe of start here. See, that's municipal.
I believe it was beginning of, uh, May.
It's the beginning of May, okay, I can, in my screen here, trying to pull it up. Yeah, beginning of May, so it's like, basically five months total, uh, five and a half months total, um, for. So, I'm not sure what your timeframe is on getting it done. Um, but the idea is there are ways to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're doing.
Okay, I mean, to me, me personally, as one council member, I'm not.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand, I'm just, I, I, I mean, I, it, it is, I, I'm jumping in because, uh, I wasn't involved early on. I know she had talked to John, that's why I brought him on. Um, I knew that there was a budget done, and then we hadn't heard anything until Mister Simpson called us and reached out to us, and that's when, and that's when, uh, I actually talked to her, I talked to Mister Simpson, and it kinda just brought the two together to try to make sure that we understood where you guys were and what you're trying to do. So, um, we've done already two of these elevators, we're looking at another one right now for Bishop McNamara. Um, then two for, one for friendship, or two for friendship public charter school and another one, um, that we're looking at for McNamara right now. So we're familiar with the elevator additions to existing buildings and what needs to be done.
All right, thank you, Councilman Harry. Uh, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I think, uh, we've been, the city has been building this elevator since two thousand nine. And the longer we wait, the more the price is gonna go up because prices go up, just like last week, a dozen eggs was five dollars. This week is fifteen. So, uh, we need to move forward with this project. I think Mister Simpson has done a diligent job in making sure that all of the things that this council has asked for has been provided, and we need to move forward. Uh, Mister Simpson, I didn't know that we needed, we were doing a, I thought we were only gonna do for, we were only requesting from CPJ a feasibility study for the police building, not for anything for the elevator, because the elevator has been in the works for so long that most of the information that we needed was available. And also, I think there's a Tamika on here, is that Ms. Felder?
No.
No? Okay, all right. So, uh, as far as the, um, feasibility study for the police station, I didn't know that we were doing a feasible, are we doing a feasibility study for the elevator too?
Um, Council President? Yeah, I believe the last meeting was also, uh, I was instructed to also make sure we solicit our own engineers to make sure we, uh, had them give input and evaluate this particular project based upon the information that's been provided. Uh, I believe the thought and, uh, I believe it was brought up uh, by Mister, uh, you, Councilman Herring, uh, so please correct me if I get this wrong. Uh, I think the comment was, uh, we, we have engineers on retainer or, uh, that we're contracted with. You would like to make sure we have that information verified by our own engineers. Um, so they are a feasibility study and they are also, uh, looking at the elevator project, uh, for cost assessments.
It seems like we would have used them a long time ago since we've been affiliated with them. When I first came on the council, we was affiliated with CPJ. If that was something we wanted for the elevator project, then I think it should have been done. I think this is, uh, I have to go back and listen to that meeting, cause I thought in that meeting that it was only a feasibility study for the police station. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Are there any comments on this resolution? Yes, sir, Councilman Harry.
And we did ask to, to have the engineers look at the numbers for this elevator project. I'm not understanding why nobody would spend their, their own money this way, just arbitrarily throw it out there because it's been a long time. If you're getting work done on your house, you're not gonna, cause, just because you need your roof done, don't mean you're gonna take the first person that walks by to say you need your roof done, I'm gonna charge you a hundred thousand dollars, and you don't give it to them. It's, we have an ob- ob- obligation to the citizens in this community, best bang for our buck. You know, I'm not gonna sit here and arbitrarily, and I, like I said, I've been pushing this elevator for years and years and years, and I would love to see it get done, but not at, at the expense of basically being overcharged by anybody or not making sure that what we're getting is, is, is what we, what we, what we're paying for is actually what is worth. I'm, I'm just not gonna do it. Again, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens. Um, again, this elevator project has been in the works for a long time. I think we need to check everything when we're doing something. We're spending over a million dollars, looking at spending over a million dollars. And I was, the original thing that I said was that resolution should have went out, I mean, it should have went out, went out as RFP. Because then nobody would have known what was what. Now, we've talked on this meeting publicly about one point three million dollars for the elevator, one point three million dollars for the elevator. And now, everybody's coming in at one point three, one point four million dollars, cause there was not a competitive bid process. So, um, I have a problem with that all the way around. So, no, some things were not done in accordance to the way it should have been done to protect the city. So, I don't see, yeah, the job is getting done, but it isn't as, 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 as superb as it should have been done, because a lot of things were missed. A lot of things weren't done in accordance to what should have been done to protect the city, and I think the numbers are coming in high because three million dollars, I can guarantee you, everybody that comes now is gonna be one point something million dollars. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. All right. Are moving on uh, to our forty-six dash twenty-twenty-five, a resolution authorizing purchase of a code enforcement vehicle. Mister Simpson?
All right, um, so you noticed the surplusing of the, uh, other code vehicle. Uh, that code vehicle is definitely, uh, I think passes, uh, lifetime. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, well, I'm pretty confident investing any particular money into that vehicle may not be wise at this particular time. Um, I do know that code enforcement, uh, is scheduled to hire another full-time and part-time person. Um, and this additional vehicle will be needed and shared between, uh, the two. Um, I can, do believe, uh, Mister Green, Code Enforcement Manager Green is also available uh, for any dis- additional questions, uh, relative to, uh, the vehicle.
All right, are there any questions, comments, in council? And Mister Simpson, this is in the budget?
Yes.
All right, here are no other questions or comments, we will move on. Here in the town, are there any council members who would like to discuss any of the administrative reports at this time? All right, moving on to topics of discussion, expungement fair, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um, so we just got finished meeting with officials that, uh, me and Councilman Harrison just got finished meeting with officials that, uh, this office of state prosecutors, so we're on, we're on track to have the expulsion fair on April the nineteenth, um, from ten, end to, ten to two. Um, we're still ironing out some of the logistics. Just wanna know, um, just wanna put everybody on notice, those who can help, definitely let me know, um. Uh, cause we're gonna try to run the same operation we did last time, which was really efficient, you know, trying to give everybody the information ahead of time, so they can get in line and get through. Um, so far, uh, Councilman Harrison and I, uh, with this program, we've expunged almost two hundred people. Um, criminal records, so, you know, it's very popular, and the state attorney's office says we have the biggest one every year. So they're really looking forward to doing it also. So, just definitely, you know, it, date, and if you're available, let me know so we can start getting assignments set up.
All right, I'm available, so sign me up.
The date again, I'm sorry, April nineteenth, is that the date?
Yes.
So Mister Ha- Councilman Harry, and you can sign me up on the nineteenth as well.
Okay, great.
All right, Councilman Jones?
Councilman Jones is also available on April nineteenth.
Okay, tha- thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Councilman Gail?
Uh, just wanted to ask Councilman Herring or Councilman Harrison, what's the deadline that, um, that, when do you need, I know you need to know ASAP, but when do you need to know, like, what's the drop dead deadline?
For you to mean, for you to volunteer?
Yeah.
Um, I, we, I feel like we can always do somebody, so just let us know as soon as you can be available to, feel like that should be good.
Okay, I'll look at my, um, work calendar. All right.
Thanks.
Vice President Ferguson?
I'm available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move on to the residential parking permit program. Mister Green, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, good evening.
Good evening. I'd, I'd like to, um, put to you to, you know, present your, your questions and things you need from the council to get this across the finish line.
Okay, uh, thank you, President Curtis. If you don't mind, uh, the city of Glenarden aims to implement a residential parking permit program to improve efficiency, enhance enforcement, and provide a permit management system for resident and visitors. This will initially occur by a pilot program of eight locations. These locations are Hay Street, Dalewood Avenue, Fisk Avenue, Grant Drive, Tyrrell Drive, Beth Avenue, Jeff Road, and Gary Lane. A council member has suggested the addition of Glenardon Parkway. Uh, but I haven't heard any additional information about it. So there's one of the questions was that should Glenon Parkway be part of the pilot pro- program? Um, in addition, we have, um, researched into two program models. The manual program and the digital program. And through the research, we feel that the digital program would be the best way to go. Some of the strengths of the digital program is its convenient online access. Uh, it's automated enforcement via the license plate recognition. Uh, it eliminates physical, eliminates the need for the physical permits. And, uh, you're able to apply and renew online, and it enables quick and accurate, uh, enforcement. Um, there're gonna be three types of permits. There's gonna be residential permits, guest permits, and emergency permits. I've spoken with several vendors as it relates to the RPP program. Uh, one vendor is, uh, a tow truck company, ATTC. They have the software and towing combined. Uh, I spoke with bumper-to-bumper and parking by plate, which have software and towing services combined. Also, I've been speaking with Passport Inc., they have software only. Um, the city of College Park and Prince George's County Revenue Authority uses this software. Uh, and another company I've been speaking with is, um, Community Boss. Uh, these all offer the digital permits that we are recommending. I'm gonna take a quick moment to see if anybody has any, uh, questions.
Yes, Councilman Joe, or the Councilman Gail?
Sure, um, the, uh, so thank you, Mister Green, um. I, I, I love hearing that there's movement being made. Now, if we were to go with what you're proposing, how long do you think implementation will take?
Great question, thank you, Councilwoman, um. We've received various answers, um, some as quickly as two weeks. Uh, some as long as six to eight weeks for implementation. Um, but the, the benefits of going with, uh, a digital program um, ca- cannot be underestimated or overstated.
Okay. Hopefully, the two weeks one is the more realistic one, so.
I'll continue to drill down on that and, um, uh, get additional information.
Thank you so much.
Oh, didn't, um, sorry. Are there any other questions from council members at this time? Uh, I did have one, uh, for these towing companies, are they able to tow um, different sized cars? For example, I know that, um, there have been, uh, bigger trucks that have been illegally in the city. Would they be able to, um, also take care of those trucks?
Uh, yes, and I still have other, uh, tow truck companies to meet with. Uh, but the ones I've met were thus far are able to tow the larger vehicles.
Okay.
And if I may, Council President, another, um, pending question in addition to whether Glenardon Parkway should be part, part of the pilot program is whether the program should be, uh, twenty-four seven? Or should we have some specific hours? We have recommended, uh, some specific hours such as, um, enforcement Monday through Thursday from ten PM to eight AM, and Friday through Sunday from eleven PM to eight AM. And I know that, um, there were at least one council member who wanted to have a discussion about um, the total number of permits that would be issued. The ordinance before Councilman Herring placed the emergency ordinance called for five permits. Two residential permits, one caregiver permit, and two guest permits.
Okay. So. I'm trying to collect all your questions. One, the first question is should Glenon Parkway be included? Um, I'm fine with the original eight. Uh, I know Glenon Parkway is a, a long parkway, um. But, you know, that's my opinion, it's, uh, Councilman Jones?
That's also my, uh, suggestion. What's the question of Glenardon Parkway? Are we speaking of?
When the requests, uh, came from a council member, it, it was not specific, it just said Glenardon Parkway. So I was hoping to get some more feedback uh, as it, uh, relates to that, and I think it was, uh, uh, Councilwoman Fareed who may not be on the call to- tonight.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll defer to, um, I, when I'm in, um, Ward One, I don't necessarily see the issue on Glenon Parkway, but I'll defer to Councilmember Harry. Uh, and add Councilmember Harrison if, if Ward Two wants to include, uh, Glenon Parkway in the pilot program.
Yeah, Mister President?
Yes, Councilman Harry.
Yes, I don't think it need, Glenon Parkway needs to be included in the pilot program. Um I don't see much of an issue on Glenon Parkway. Like you said, it's one of our longest streets and it's one of our widest streets. So I think we should just the original eight that we have.
Okay, any opposition to keeping the original eight? Okay, so that's one question down. Uh Mr. Green, what's the next question?
Uh the next question was um in regards to enforcement being twenty-four hours, seven days a week, or going to specific hours. Our recommendation would be for specific hours, which we have put forth as being uh from Monday through Thursday, ten PM to eight AM, and Friday through Sunday from eleven PM to eight AM. So I wanted to get the feedback from the council as to uh, you know, if they have any preference as far as the the um the hours of enforcement.
Any recommendations from council? I I know, I I think um I think that I'll, in in my opinion, I will move the i- if we are going, if it's not gonna be twenty-four seven, uh that I'll move it between uh now the times you gave were were the times where it's not being enforced, right?
No, where it will be enforced. So any vehicles that's on the street between those hours have to have the appropriate permits.
Oh, wow, so. Okay, all right. Let me think about it. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I mean, I was, I'm in agreement with those hours. Again, I think about um, you know, holidays, when you have like Fourth of July and you know, maybe Christmas and everything, when you have people over your house. You shouldn't have to, I think it'd be a a burden on uh total enforcement if they had to give out all these guest permits for these holidays if it's twenty-four seven. I think, you know, most events should be over by are over by about ten o- ten eleven o'clock on the weekends, and by about eleven o'clock on the weekends. So I think that that's fine, and Monday through Thursday, you know, most people don't have a lot of people over during the week most of the anyway, so. I think it should be parking this, you know, during the daytime hours without any major restrictions. All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, so then I'll adjust mine, but I think it should go to nine AM instead of eight AM?
Okay.
Now, I mean, I cuz I don't know what time people leave after, I'm trying to doing a conjunction with people are are having issues with getting out their driveways and stuff like that. Uh and it may be that people are still leaving after eight o'clock, you know, you understand what I'm saying? And so if the issue is that people cannot get out their driveway, or it's too tight, or, you know, I think that um and I also see the bus buses coming down, I I forget the street in Ward One that's directly in front of um Glenard and Woods. It's just, it is pretty tight. So my suggestion would be to nine AM uh enforcement. But, I mean, I'll concede, it's only hour, so if 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 other council members wants to keep it at eight, I'm fine with it. So uh any objection to to the recommendation from Mr. Green to hours he presented?
What are the hours again?
The Monday through Thursday, ten PM to eight AM, and Friday through Sunday, eleven PM to eight AM.
And so I know that Councilman Herring spoke of holidays, so we're gonna exclude holidays or that's what holidays also?
Uh no, I believe holidays will be included.
Are included, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
All right. You have that, Mr. Green. What's your next question?
Uh and the final question, um it's something that was posed by Vice President uh Ferguson, which was about the total number of permits that was being issued. Um I do believe in, I know she's on the call, so she could speak for herself, but she has some concern that that may be too many permits.
And it was what, two, two household permits?
One caregiver permit if applicable and uh two guest permits. But again, uh Councilman Herring has submitted an emergency ordinance to um remove, I think, the the guest permits. Uh let me see. I think it was to remove the caregiver permit, instead of it being a separate permit for the caregivers, the caregiver permit would be um with the residential permits. So and according to this new ordinance, you will have two residential permits. The caregiver permit is now considered a residential permit because it will be affixed to, it'll be a sticker that's affixed to the actual vehicle. And then you have the uh the two guest permits. And Councilman Herring, am I saying that correctly?
And the guest permits are no longer annual permits, cuz before the owners gave you a two guest permit, they were good for a year long. Whereas now, I put in, guest permits are only good for the day of visit.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Is
Okay.
Vice President Ferguson?
Councilman Herring, you said the guest pass is for the day of the visit?
Yes, versus giving somebody a guest pass that they can use for a whole year.
Um. But what if some somebody comes you know, out of town or something over the weekend? Or something, um they don't have anything to give them?
Well, the system allows you to register them online. I think, isn't that correct, Mr. Green? I think you can register them on your phone.
Yes.
Somebody you can only re-
Yes, and if we go the the uh the digital way, the the city can place parameters on how many permits that um a citizen can register with. So they can, so they'll be able to go online if you get a um you know, someone comes from out of town unexpectedly, or you have some type of of emergency, uh they will be able to go online and and uh obtain a guest permit um for that particular vehicle.
So you're saying two, and so in other words, it's um it went from five to two uh four?
Well, the main change was that the the guest permits are no longer, again, is no longer annual. So it's it's actually still to remain about the same. You got the two residential permits, you have the, again, the one caregiver permit um and the guest permits that's only, that's not annual now.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Green, uh
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Yes, I also with this legislation, so that's why I put it here, so we can get the bar rolling, at least we got it to the work session. Um we can clean it up. I had the emergency um emergency permits, and we just gotta figure out a way to be able to have the police basically issue those, cuz again, uh some of the scenarios that somebody brought up was like, if somebody passed away, you know, everybody comes to the house. Or if there's an emergency, a family emergency, everybody comes to the house, we don't want nobody's car being towed. So that's where we gotta have some type of way to contact officers to let them know this is an emergency situation and to be able to either issue emergency permits or something. So that's one thing we're looking at. Uh my suggestion was, you know, having a number out there that uh that will hit all the um all police officers' telephones, cuz we don't know who's gonna be on duty and when they're gonna be on duty. That way, if there's an emergency situation, somebody can call and just uh or or hit that cell phone number and then say, hey, emergency situation at this address. You know, please issue whatever they need, go over there and see what's going on, and then get an issue whatever they need. So, I mean, we're just trying to find, um look at that, that needs to be fine tuned, so.
All right, thanks.
I did have one, so I don't know if we can do this. So I agree with nixing the annual guest pass. So are we saying that a guest pass is only valid for twenty-four hours?
We can make guest passes valid for however long we want to uh in the system. You can make guest passes two hours, three hours, however long we want it to be.
Okay, I just wanted, just thinking, maybe it should be a max of three days, and then people can renew, like, so if somebody comes to the weekend, they'll have to do it once for the weekend, but what I don't want to have is people submit guest passes for, you know, continuously putting guest passes for their um their vehicles that they're just parking at them there, you know? It's not a guest pass, you know what I'm saying?
Correct, no, I totally understand.
So I think there should be a cap of seventy-two hours. If it's needed, if it's needed, then, you know, longer than they can come back for, you know, in-laws that come for a week or something like that, that's fine. But at least you'd be able to track, oh, well, this address keeps on renewing every three days for the past three weeks. Then we know that it's not a guest, it's just a regular vehicle that they're trying to park on the street. And in the street isn't, the the program isn't hasn't, isn't having its intended effect on um, you know, crowded streets.
Absolutely, and that's that's part of the the beauty of the uh the the digital passes. Uh because again, uh we can program it uh um with a lot of different uh criteria, uh that being one of how we can manage that better to um to try to reduce the fraud that eventually some people may try to do um um in the system. So um we are still refining it, uh but that is definitely the intent.
Okay, yeah, cuz I assume that you guys will be able to track if the same license plate had it for the past read up at like three times in a row.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh I just wanted to say that I'm also looking into options uh to try to get a shorter term contract. So, you know, while we're going through the uh the pilot program, just to see, to make sure that you know, that this is something that the city wants to actually uh invest in. Um I'm still waiting for some additional information to come back, but one of them, which is Community Boss, has provided us with a six-month uh uh plan. Um and this plan is it's thirty-eight hundred dollars, and that's that's uh per month. Uh so we are, you know, I wanna make sure that the council is aware that we go the digital way, there will be um a a fee that's associated with using uh their software.
All right.
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
So if it is, it's, so that's about twenty-three thousand dollars, so is that in a budget? And if not, it needs to be put in?
Um no, I could tell you that is not in code enforcement's budget at all.
He said it was thirty-eight hundred dollars a month?
Um yes, ma'am.
So um, yes, I think I think we need to put at least fifty thousand in there, cuz we don't know what the other ones may come in at. And it need, and it should go in your budget.
Okay.
So I will um get with the uh city manager and the treasurer to get that process started.
Yeah? All right. If there are no other questions?
I have a question.
Vice President Ferguson?
Okay, so we, I'm back to the um this is hypothetical, say um someone um does uh park for three consecutive weekends or overnights? And it's legit. I mean, like, we have a lot of seniors, and some of the seniors children come over, they might stay the weekend, or they might stay overnight, and maybe do some washing, cleaning, and doing whatever. And maybe they come over once, I mean, every week. We go in, say, um three consecutive weekends, and then what?
I'm s- uh I'm sorry, Councilor Vice President, you're, you was going in and out, I only heard the last part of what you said.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I was saying that the the issue with, um say, for instance, um someone um is, you know, parks, I'm, you know, parking three, three consecutive uh weekends. Um we do have a lot of seniors here, and we have some um and they all, you know, necessarily their children do not live in Glenard. Say they they come over a consec- three weekends or, you know, and they are um identified as, hey, they, you know, every weekend for the last three or four weeks they're there, and it's legit. What, I mean, what do you do then? I mean, when they may be coming over to wash, to clean, to, you know, shop, you know, or just spend, you know, spend the overnight with their parents?
Yes, there's
But they're not considered a caregiver.
Well, as as long as they have a a guest permit, uh as long as they're registered as a guest, then there's nothing that will happen. Um if they're using the um license plate reader, when they scan that particular license plate, it will show that this car should be here, it has a legitimate uh guest permit, and then nothing happens.
Okay. Okay. It's, yeah, to me, it still could be, um, you know, if somebody wanted to just be fraudulent about it, they knew that that would be the case, they could just do that as well, you know, that'd have to be, you know, I I just, you know, just wanna make sure we, I mean, we can't you know, stop everything, but as much as possible, you know, just, you know, um trying to avoid uh abuse of the system. And then when, when it's not an abuse, that the people would not be uh penalized. So you said that that would be okay, so, cuz I do know some seniors that their children come and stay overnight. Um and they would need a, you know, and they may come consistently, you know, four weekends, and then another one might come another four weekends, whatever. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Councilwoman Giel?
Thank you, Council President. Um, Mr. Green, I I'm I I believe you said Bumper to Bumper is the company that we're looking into for bu- for towing, and um if we are curious if we've looked at their reviews, their Yelp reviews specifically, because I because I have it, it looks like they don't have a good track record. So, I'm curious to know, are, are there other companies that we can look into? Because if you, I can even send the link if necessary, but I'm looking at Yelp, I try not to go into all the other type of review places, but it looks like they don't really have a good reputation.
Yes, we, um, thank you for the question, uh, Councilwoman, yes, we are looking into other, that's one of the tow truck companies that we've uh, inquired about. Um, just as you've looked online and uh, I've seen some negative reviews, uh, I've also spoken uh, with actual uh, people that have used uh, Bumper to Bumper, and they've had some nice things uh, to say about them. One of the tough things about tow truck companies is the fact of what they do. And um, you know, sometimes it rubs people the wrong way, and, and, you know, some people retaliate by going online and putting negative reviews. However, I am aware um, of the reviews for Bumper to Bumper, but again, this is, we haven't settled on a company yet, we're going through the process of meeting and speaking with uh, several tow truck companies. However, I'm not hopeful that I'm gonna find one that has, you know, uh, no bad reviews, uh, but we're, we're hopeful that, you know, we can find a company that's reputable, and that one that we will, you know, give an opportunity, uh, but, you know, check their references and things of that nature, do our due diligence.
Yeah, cuz I see triple time towing, they have four point seven, a four point seven out of five rating, so I don't know if they're on the list, but they, uh, again, I'm on Yelp, but um, but for Bumper to Bumper, and I don't know these people, but I know Bumper to Bumper, they have a one, so I was like, whoa, wait a minute. So, that's, that's why, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. President?
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Uh, I have one other thing, um, just to address Councilman Ferguson's uh, concern there, cuz I know exactly what she's talking about, cuz you do have people that do come and assist, but you gotta remember also that that senior will also have two residential passes, they may not have three cars, they may not have, they may just have one car parked in the driveway, so they will have those passes available for their kids, if they wanna register their kids' cars. As well as, I think uh, Mr. Green said, we can basically, we had a flexibility of giving, you know, saying what the guest passes, when, when the guest passes can be used, if they can be used for weekends, or, you know, or on how many weekends, you can say four weekends, you know. Or we can, and, and I think we can even look at it in a um, situational way also, I think. There's something else we need to look at, you know, if we do have that situation. So, I think that, I think this gives us a lot of flexibility when it comes down to the situation that you're talking about, cuz again, we do have, and I do have a lot of seniors like right now that have help on people, this, their family come and help them out, you know, and they're always there, so I just wanna make sure they don't come here and then help out their mom, or their dad, or their parents, and then come outside and the car gone, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, that was a lot of that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, RFPs, um, Madam Clerk, I don't see a name beside that, who was that? Miss Boyd, she's still here? Well, I see her. Any council members have RFP? Okay, well, we'll move on if no one has anything to say about RFPs. Alright, with that, um, the council is about to adjourn to
I had put on the uh, agenda, asked to put on the agenda at the time uh, that we had, just agenda discussion. To add to the agenda, the uh, I, I'd like to get a status on the uh, stop sign project that we started. I know the citizens came forward and said that they were having some uh, stop sign issues uh, on Glen Arden Parkway, and we had talked with uh, Captain Robinson concerning this, cuz I think the chief was uh, on a, on another mission. And um, but I was wanting to get a update on where we were, making sure that that project is moving along smoothly, I'm sure uh, we got an uh, email over the weekend saying that uh, they had installed the devices, and I just wanted to know of the three days that we've done this, if the chief can give us a, a status on how we're, how we're doing with them. And what's the next step?
Chief Bryant? You on mute?
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, yes, they came out on Friday evening, um, um, Friday evening, uh, the captain and myself, we went out there and Avio came out, and um, we identified three locations on Glen Arden Parkway, um, northbound at Glen Arden Parkway and Johnson Avenue, Glen Arden Parkway and Echoes Avenue northbound, and Glen Arden Parkway and Fisk Avenue southbound. And um, like I said, they came out on Friday um, evening, um, got finished setting up around five-thirty. And so, um, Lieutenant Robson should be on with um, the stats, um, from the weekend, but um, he calculated it for me pretty much, um, so I did get the stats from Friday evening until um, Monday morning, um. So, if you look at, from um, Glen Arden Parkway and Johnson Avenue northbound, um, from Friday evening until Monday, Monday, they had um, three hundred and forty vehicles went through that stop sign, and they had two hundred and fifty-seven violations, which was seventy-six percent. And um, Captain, Captain Robson calculated that to be like approximately ten thousand dollars, ten thousand two hundred eighty dollars just for those two days. Glen Arden Parkway and Echoes Avenue, um, for those two days, he had two hundred thirty-two vehicles, went, went through those stop signs and two hundred and six violations, with eighty-nine percent um, violations, and that calculated to be around eight thousand two hundred forty dollars in violations. And then southbound on Glen Arden Parkway and Fisk, you had three hundred and thirty-one vehicles went through that location, two hundred and fifty-four violations. That was seventy-seven percent violations, and that calculated to be ten thousand one hundred sixty dollars in violations. And that was just for that, um, from Friday, um, around six o'clock until Monday morning. And then they gave us another update, um, from Monday until tonight. And I think Lieutenant, uh, I mean Captain, um, Robson got those um, numbers. And I think those numbers up by the school on Echoes, um, got a real large number, but I don't have those numbers with me right now, but I think he had those, so, very effective, um, with those people running those stop signs over there.
So, the, the, the one that they took today was because school was in, in, in uh,
In session, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and the numbers were higher?
Much higher.
Yeah, yes, yes, hey, how you doing? This is uh, Captain Robinson, I have those stats too, if you guys wanna hear them.
Sure.
Okay, so, today, today, like I said, this is during, you know, during regular hours. Uh, what the chief just read was weekend, was a weekend stats, this is just, this is the stats just for today. So, from Glen Arden to John- Johnson, two hundred and twenty-seven vehicles passed through the stop sign with one hundred and eighty-six violations, uh, that equaled out to seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Then at Glen Arden and Echoes, four hundred and ninety-six vehicles passed through, that's near the school. Four hundred and ninety-six vehicles passed through with four hundred and fifty-four violating the stop sign. That's ninety-one, that's ninety-one percent of the vehicles that passed through have uh, did not stop. That was calculated to eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And the, the final one was Fisk, that's going down the hill, leaving the school. Six hundred and fifty vehicles passed through the stop sign with five hundred and three violations. That's about seventy-seven percent. And that, if we, if we added that up, that was twenty thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. That's just for one day.
Okay, so we know that i- if, if we go uh, with this, this system to put it in for the city, we know that once people figure out that there are uh, cameras there, then we're going, that these numbers prices will probably go down, but at this rate, trying to uh, get people to adhere to the stop sign, especially around that school, we need to go ahead and move forward, what, what's our next step? What does the council need to do if this is the, the pleasure of the council to address this issue um, with this um, system?
Okay, so, well, the good thing is that um, these cameras are mobile, so they can be moved from, from uh, place to place, you know, whenever there's an issue, we can move, they can be actually moved, so that's the good thing, so, if they stop, if they stop, stop, start stopping, then that's a great thing, then it, you know, that solved that problem. And I believe, I believe that each camera, if each camera pays for itself with ten violations, ten violations, I believe pays for, will actually pay for the camera service itself, and as you can see, these numbers are, are, are tremendous, so. Um, the next step is to, we have to, I think we have to do some type of legislation. Been talking to Charles, uh, the city manager about it, so he's aware of the next steps. So, we have a meeting, we're gonna have a meeting with uh, Avio on Friday, and discuss all the stats, and we're gonna also discuss what our next step is, but that's if you guys um, are on board.
Council President, could you get the, find out the pleasure of the council, this is something that we wanna pursue, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
I, I'm in favor of it too, is there anyone who uh, opposes uh, moving forward with this?
Yeah, Ms. President, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure, pass me here.
When was this discussed, to put those, put these up?
Uh, the last meeting, you guys uh, talked to me about uh, the stop sign, about the stop sign problem, and I shared with you guys that I knew a vendor that could handle this situation, and that's what I did.
Hmm, I don't remember that, because again, my thing is knowing the vendor, and what they're gonna do is, is two different things, I'm just like, you know, I'm, you know, I represent the city of Glen Arden, I represent Ward One, and I would like to know when something like this is gonna go up, and what type of program is gonna go up, it seemed like some council members know about it and some don't. I mean, I didn't know anything about it until, really until I saw the email.
I thought I sent an email out.
I saw the email after they were set up, yes, um, but prior to that, I didn't, I didn't, I never even heard of the vendor you're talking about.
Um, yeah, yeah, like I said, I believe we meant, we spoke about it uh, at the last meeting, about stop signs.
Do you did speak about stop signs, we talked about stop sign, but I know the citizens suggested having blinking, the blinking stop signs, and I was like, those about, and they wanted to know how much they cost, but these cam, but these cameras, I knew nothing about a camera being put up, um, in Ward One, um, yeah, um. So, yeah, I mean, I do have a problem with that and not being notified was in my, in my, in my, in the area that I represent. Um, again, and I think one thing I, that really bothers me, is this about safety or is this about dollars? Because I'm not really worried about the dollar amount we're collecting, I'm worried about if it's, if it's gonna stop the problem, you know, um, you know, when we do that, and that's what, that's what people start questioning when we put up these cameras like this, oh, you just wanna make money off of it, that's the same thing we had when we had the speed cameras, that's the first thing they say, cuz all they, all they, all it, uh, at the time, the chief at that time, and the police department at that time, would talk about is, how much money you making, how much money you making, how much money you making, I'm like, is it about the money or is it about safety? You know, that's what they're supposed to be about, so, um, yeah, I just have a, a problem when, and it looks like it's a money grab versus um, a safety issue, um, so, those are my two issues, so, alright, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry, um, I, I have a different opinion relates to the um, the need for, I see people going to the stop sign all the time, and I do think it's a safety issue. I, I see, I see students who are waiting to cross the street, but they're too afraid to cross the street because people are running those signs. And I try to make it a, a, you know, an effort to make sure that, you know, I stop and allow people to go past, even if they are, you know, the kids who are scared will tell you to keep on going, and I'll say, no, keep, you know, you come on. Uh, because it is a huge issue, as we just found out from the stats. Um, I think that because people violate that, I mean, without it, we don't really have a, a mechanism in place to stop it. People are disrespecting our children, uh, and, and neglect the, the safety of our children who live in the city of Glen Arden. And because they're doing that, then they should be fined, uh, fined, uh, and they should pay for the system that that is finding them, um, and, and hopefully, um, it will stop. Now, in the family chat, um, in the Glen Arden Woods chat, um, someone saw the, someone saw the officers, you know, there waiting to pull people over, and they put in the, in the uh, the school chat, hey, be aware, make sure you're stopping at the stop sign, because Glen Arden Police, they're pulling people over for running a stop sign. Well, and I want, I stay out of those chats, my wife is in those chats. Uh, and I wanna say, well, good, I'm glad that the word is getting around, because I'm tired of them, you know, for the most part, a lot of people go to Glen Arden Woods, at least Glen Arden Woods, don't live in this community. So, I'm tired of people coming from other places, you know, just not respecting our community and the traffic safety of our community. So, I'm, I'm, I don't think it's a money grab, uh, I think it's a mechanism that we'd have to have in place, and if we have to have something in place, then the people who are violating those um, safety signs should be the one who pay for it. And some of those people, and I can put it all on, um, uh, put it all on outsiders, cuz I'm pretty sure a lot of those are Glen Ardeners as well, uh, who are running those stop signs.
Uh, Ms. President, may I?
Yeah, sure.
Let me just say this, I didn't say it was a money grab, I said it looks like a money grab when you're always talking about the dollars that you're gonna make off the system. And that's a major problem, and that's what people don't, people don't like, that's the issue we had when we had to re- like, cameras. Is, oh, you're just, you're just about making money, I'm like, no, it's not about making money, I say y'all need to speak on a safety issue versus putting out the dollar issue, because again, the money isn't the issue, the, the, the issue is people running the stop signs. And I do think it, it's, it's kinda a statement that you just made about, you know, there's no other way to stop it, yeah, there is other way to stop it, police enforcement. Like you said, when he found out they were down there, it went around that they were down there enforcing it, so there is a, you don't need the cameras, you have police officers also that can enforce these intersections out here, you know, um, so, I'm not gonna sit there and say that's gonna be, be the end all and we all, uh, where you know, that's gonna solve the whole problem, cuz once they do know the problem, they'll stop at the stop sign and fly to the, fly down to the next one, and they'll stop at the next one and fly down to the next one, so, again, I mean, I know we need to address the issue, I know that there is an issue out there. Again, as a council member in Ward One, I would like to be kept abreast of what's going on in my ward, cuz citizens are gonna ask me about it right now, and I don't know anything about it, I don't know what system it is, I don't know anything about it, except for what y'all told me tonight, you know. Spoke about it, we spoke about stop signs, and now we got cameras. So, alright, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry, uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, guys, whether we have the, you know, cameras, um, blinking stop signs, or the police presence, um, definitely, that little stretch where they are, they need to be there. A couple of weeks ago, I was um, going down Glen Arden Parkway towards the school, and I was, I was right at Fisk Avenue, um, right in front of the Austin's house, I had not even came to stop, I was give, I was stopped, and the car literally went around me, and this, you know, went straight up Glen Arden Parkway, and I just went on up, I was, you know, going to the Ethan house, but I went past there, they, they pulled right into the to the school, and like, um, President said, a lot of the, most of the, um, um, the children don't even, I mean, the people don't even live in Glen Arden, and so, um, and I know that this wasn't the first time that happened, anytime someone wants to And so, um, and I know that this wasn't the first time that happened, anytime someone wants to, they can't even stop. They, they just literally went around me and went straight through the, through the, um, through the stop sign, and that happens a lot, um. And I see it happening, so we do, regardless of what, what we use, we definitely need to do that because again, that's the school district, that's, you know, they got children playing there, you know, and not only that, you know, will cause accidents, you know, vehicle accidents, so we do need to do something promptly. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Um, are there any other comments on this subject? Alright. With that, um, the council, um, would like to uh adjourn to a closed session to discuss a personnel matter. Um, so to the Antedote Code of Maryland, State Government, Article ten, five oh eight A, the council may by majority vote, may retire to executive closed session anytime during the meeting. Should council retire to executive closed session, the chair will announce the reason, and a report be issued at a future meeting disclosing the reasons for such closed session. As I stated, this will be to discuss, quickly discuss a personnel matter. Um, and with that, I, I motion that the, um, the council adjourn to a closed session, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, we'll just go through a vote, I think, um, Madam Clerk, is your laptop working now?
Yeah, I'm back, thank you.
Okay, can you do the roll call for this, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Gill?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Sorry, yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis.
Yes. Alright, with that, the time is ten twelve, the open part of this meeting is now closed, see you next week at the public hearing, have a good night.